Milpitas, I'm your 2022 Board President, Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On February 18, 2022, the board enacted the AB 361 in accordance with Executive Order N-122. Public comments can be made while you are logged on to Zoom, or if you are in person, YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Shall we call the meeting to order? Scott?
Okay, roll call. Board Member Si? Board Member Si, roll call. You're muted, Board Member Si? Okay, Board Member Leanne?
Here.
Board Clerk Yu?
Here.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Here.
Board President Yipchuan?
Here.
And Board Member Si? Board Member Si?
Did he step away?
So Board Member Si is logged on, and I did speak with him prior to us going live, so he is there.
Hello?
Board Member Si, we were doing our roll call.
Okay, well, I am here.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much, and our student board reps will be joining us later for public session. Okay, we're moving on to Item 3, review and approve the closed session agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's do roll call.
Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Yu?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Great, okay, so comments from the public, are there any public comments before we adjourn to closed session?
We have no virtual hands raised at this time, and no green cards have been handed in, so no public comments at this time.
Okay, is there any public comments in person?
No, we have no public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're moving on to Item 5, closed session. The meeting will adjourn to closed session to discuss anortic actions on the following item. We have two items, personnel and the conference with the labor negotiator. So let's move to closed session.
Motion move to closed session. Second.
Okay. Scott, do we need to do the...
Roll call vote, Board Member Si?
Yes.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Yu?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Okay, moving on.
We are live and ready to go, President Yipchuan.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening again, Melpitas. I'm your 2022 Board President, Kelly Yipchuan. Welcome to this meeting of the Melpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which is aligned with the guidelines set forth by the Ralph M. Brown Act for opening meetings. On February 18, 2022, the board enacted the AB 361 in accordance with Executive Order N-122. Tune into our hybrid-style board meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube, or in person inside our boardroom. Public comments can be made while you're logged into Zoom, or if you are in person. YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comment webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. For our virtual audience, you will see the instructions for public comments on your screen. Our communication specialists will briefly go over them. For our in-person audience, please go to the podium when you are called on. Instructions for both are also listed on each agenda. There are copies available at the back table. One public comment per person is allowed for each item. Our communication specialists will take it from here.
Thank you, President Yipchuan. And as the President said, anybody who's here in the boardroom, if you'd like to make a public comment, there are green cards by the entranceway there. You'd fill them out, hand them to me, and then I'll relay them to the board president. For our online audience, you will need to be logged on to Zoom, which most of you are. You will click the raise your hand icon to indicate that you have a request to make a public comment. We ask you to please wait to be called upon. We will call names in order they are received. Once your name is called, we'll enable your audio. Then you will have two minutes to speak. You'll just take yourself off mute and go right ahead. And we just ask that you please be patient. The board president will call for any public comment at the appropriate time. Members of the public may address the board on any subject that does not appear on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and Point 3 preclude any action. As an unagendized item, no response is required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. Please note that the Brown Act, Government Codes Section 54954.3 prohibits members of the board in commenting or engaging in discussion during the public comment portion of the agenda, except when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker, provide a reference to staff members for factual information, or request a staff member to report back to the board on any matter at a subsequent meeting. We do provide special accommodations upon request. If you do need any special accommodations, we ask that you please contact the superintendent's office at least two business days prior to the meeting. Our meetings are broadcast, streamed live on both Zoom and YouTube, and they are recorded. And those recordings are available on our website, www.musd.org. Closed captioning is available on the Zoom platform. You click the closed captioning icon, and a live transcription, which is not 100% accurate, I may add, will appear on your screen. Also, and lastly, if there are any additional documents that did not appear on the agenda, those are public documents and available at the district office upon request. Thank you so much, President Yipchuan. Back to you.
Thank you, Scott. Earlier, we did roll calls, so now we're doing the roll call for student board reps? Do you want to do that, or you want me to?
It's up to you, President, if you'd like to do it.
Okay, if you insist, go ahead.
Okay, we will start with our middle, college, high school student board rep who is here in attendance, Mira Bhakta.
Here.
Thank you. Student board rep from Melpitas High School, Sidney Wong.
Here.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay, thank you, Scott. In closed session, the board voted unanimously to accept the resignation of a certificate manager. The effective date will be June 30, 2022. Also, by a vote of 5-0, the board took action to reelect two probationary teachers for the upcoming 2022-23 school year and directed to the superintendent or designated to notify impacted employees. Okay, we are moving on to item 8, review and approve the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the open session agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Scott?
Roll call vote. Board Member Si.
Aye.
Board Member Leanne.
Yes.
Board Clerk Newell.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan.
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine, we're doing the flag salute. We have the Melpitas High School, NJROTC. Could you please come up, state your name, and lead us in the pledge?
Hello, I am Kada Tran, and with me I have Kada Alatori. Please rise, remove your caps, and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, NJROTC, and thank you for your service. We are now moving on to item number 10, comments from the public. Are there any public comments at this time?
Would you like to start with the virtual or the in-person public?
Let's start with the in-person. We have Lieutenant Margie Jackson, NJROTC. Please come up.
Good evening, board members and staff. My name is Lieutenant Margie Jackson, and I'm the senior instructor for the JROTC program. And I would just like to thank the board and thank the superintendent for your continued support of our program. I just wanted to give you an update of some of the things we're currently doing in our program and where we stand. As you know, we started our eighth-grade pilot program at Russell Middle School, which is going very well. We currently have approximately 20 eighth graders who signed up for the program, who are in our sixth-period class. They appear to like it. We have identified some gaps and challenges, and we are currently working with the Russell Middle School and our high school to resolve these issues and hope that we can get them resolved as soon as possible, and with the board's support. The superintendent has been copied on this correspondence, so we're looking for some positive results very soon. We continue to support our community and outreach programs. And on Friday, as an example, we perform, or our color guard performed at the Rotary Conference on Friday, which was very successful, and the students and the Rotary was very happy with their performance. On Wednesday, the 23rd of March, we will have our Military Annual Inspection, where our area superintendent will be down to do our inspection. And as you know, that our program requires two instructors. And we recently found a potential candidate. However, during the process, we found out that our requisition had expired. We're working with the MHS administration. Thank you. The school administration to help remedy this problem. With our inspection coming up, this lack of a second instructor will have a negative impact on our program and will result in an unsatisfactory rating. So we are hoping that with the school's support, that we can get the requisition at least advertised back, so that will end up being not such a negative impact. I thank you, board, for your continued support and your interest and commitment to our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant Jackson, and for your service.
Okay, we have.
Hold on, Scott. So what's the action item? About a requisition?
As a public comment, we can come back to the board with that.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one virtual hand raised. Robert Jung, we've enabled your audio. Please take yourself off mute. You have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is Robert Jung, representing the Melpitas Community Education Endowment. I'd like to announce that we have opened up our Danny Lau Memorial Scholarship for this year. For those who are not familiar with it, it is a scholarship to honor our inspirational leader in our community, Danny Lau. He was a Melpitas Unified School Board member and a firm believer in getting our community involved in our public schools. He passed away in March of 2017 and will be forever in our hearts and memories. These two $500 scholarships are available to Melpitas High School or Cal Hills High School class of 2022 that are ready to embark on a college education. The scholarship will be awarded at MHS Senior Award Ceremony or to Cal Hills High School graduation. And this is our sixth year doing this. We are actually trying to stretch this out to a seventh year. The original goal was to only do this for six years, but if we can raise probably another $200, we think we can make this into one more year, so we're looking for anyone who might be interested in support. The scholarship is available online at our webpage, which is mcefoundation.org. Look under scholarships, and you'll find Danny Lau Memorial Scholarship as the application. We're happy to take any questions via email. And the application is due Sunday, April 17, at 11:59 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no more public comments at this time.
Superintendent, could you connect with the MCEE regarding?
in regards to the Milpitas Middle College? Because she didn't mention anything about the middle college there.
The middle college high school doesn't have a senior class issue.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so we're moving on to item 11, MUSD 2018-2021 Strategic Goals. Build a culture we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication system for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Item 12, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, President Yip Chuan.
Superintendent Jordan, can I sort of steal your spotlight for one second?
Of course.
Today is Women's Day, and I would like to take this one minute to honor all the women who served the country, to recognize all the women who contribute to this wonderful world, and especially locally here in MUSD. Thank you, big thank you to all the women that do great things for the students, for the families. So if God could trust men to run this planet, he wouldn't have created women. So Happy Women's Day.
Thank you, Tracy, again, and the same to you. Thank you for your leadership.
And speaking of women in leadership, tonight, I would like to recognize Ms. Norma Morales. She is a person who has dedicated a great deal of her life to Milpitas and to our residents, as well as, of course, to our students. And Mayor Tran recognized her a few weeks back with the Key to the City. And so we would like to also recognize, Norma, your accomplishment, and thank you on this International Day of Women as a representative of women in leadership. So if you and your family and Mayor Tran could come up and take a picture with our board and cabinet, that would be terrific.
Hey, good evening, Milpitas. Great to be back home here at Milpitas Unified School District. I want to first thank our amazing Milpitas Unified School Board for allowing me to be here this evening, as well as the Superintendent Cheryl Jordan. Thank you for allowing me to be here and having just a few moments of everybody's time. It's been a pleasure to be the first Milpitas High School graduate elected mayor. It's been a dream come true. This school, district, and every campus I've graduated from really set me up for success, and it's been so sweet. And my time is coming to an end as your mayor. And this calendar year, I've been really thinking deep in my soul about the amazing people that we have, amazing leaders that we have throughout our land of cornfields. And I'm super honored to recognize and honor and award Norma Morales, our Latino student liaison over at Milpitas High School, for her work with the community. I can really understand how important it is for us to have really cultural competence and to recognize our diversity in regards to all of our students. My mother was a sort of English-as-a-second-language immigrant here in town. She also was a single mother. And I know that there are many parents that are like my mother in the district right now that are working hard here in Silicon Valley with all the challenges that this great valley presents, cost of living, gas prices. And to not have English as a primary language, it's really challenging, to say the least. But in observing Norma throughout these several years, I feel like my heart is full for all the parents and families in our community that they have someone, a leader on campus, someone that can connect all the dots that need to be connected. And I know it makes a world of a difference for our diverse community. And so for her years of service and for all the lives that-- students' lives that Norma has touched, and for making these students believe that their dreams are possible, and for all the students that have gone on to be successful post-graduation from Milpitas High, I award you this Key to the City, and I thank you for all that you do and all that you continue to do. Thank you very much.
I know she's going to be relieved so much. Kelly Yip Chuan, Vice President Chris Norwood, board members Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, and Cabinet. Thank you, thank you so much. It's a pleasure, it's an honor. Thank you, Darva. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Vera. All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Mr. Joseph Earhart of the Milpitas Historical Society. The Milpitas Historical Society, for a number of years, contributed greatly to-- thank you-- has contributed greatly to our students and their knowledge of the history that we all are a part of here in our beautiful community, Milpitas, and in particular, our second-grade students. Because our second-grade students, part of their content standards that they learn is about their local government, their local history. And Mr. Earhart and the Milpitas Historical Society have done a tremendous amount to make it come alive for them by donating books, which is what they're doing this year, that tell about the history of Milpitas, and also sharing their own research and love and real-life stories about living and developing Milpitas. So, Mr. Earhart, if you would like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. The project, the one that you mentioned, which was where we go into-- we've actually gone first grade and third grade. But that age group is absolutely a delight to go into. Yeah, I mean, they're so curious and fun. So the real reward is actually just being with them, because we have a lot of fun with them. And the program's going to expand. We had terminated it, we had suspended it because of pandemic, of course, but that's about to start up again, along with a lot of other things. I provided a description of all the activities that we have done and are going to be doing that you can have for your own reading. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And now, I'd like to invite up our Russell basketball coach, Mr. Tony Suarez, and our fantastic Russell basketball team. They won the championship. So if you could all come up, please. And I noticed that one of you on your T-shirts, it says Scholars Basketball. And one thing that we really elevate and hold up here in Milpitas is the scholar-athlete. So athletics in Milpitas is really an integrated part of pathways. Our strategic goal number three--
They're too tall.
And I thank you, Mr. Suarez, for giving your time to make sure that these young men have an opportunity to be a team. And then, if families can join us, so we get a picture with you two.
You have to stand by your child.
Come on, families.
Come on, families, come on in.
Come on, don't be shy.
It's a tradition, sorry.
All right. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words, coaching them?
All right, I just wanted to say thank you, gentlemen, for being the greatest group of guys I've had in my years at Russell. I've coached a long time there, and these guys are the most humble group of guys that I've had. I can honestly say that. And I thank you, board superintendent, as well, for the invite. It's a real big treat for the guys. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Coach Suarez.
Superintendent Jordan? I want to circle back on the award that was given to the Milpitas Historical Society. I'd like to know, can we bring it back to determine what it would take to support them in helping to develop the curriculum for our early learners in Milpitas? Would they all get a chance to know the history of Milpitas?
So you're asking about having them create a Milpitas history curriculum? Sure, I think we could do that. It sounds like they probably already have a strong basis for it. So yes, we can definitely meet with Mr. Earhart and follow up on that. Executive Director Priti Johari? Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. You know, earlier, we have another green card, and I would like to call up Trun Ramesh.
Hi, everyone. First of all, Happy Women's Day for all the women in the room. My name is Trun Ramesh, and I am graduate from Milpitas High School. And I am here to talk about an event that is happening this Saturday. I am a part of the neurodiverse community, and I am on the autistic spectrum. I am very proud to be employed at Pragna as an administrative project coordinator. Oftentimes, special needs individuals like me are often forgotten or marginalized throughout their lives and feel very lonely and abandoned. It is very important for us to have the communities extend a friendly hand to people like me to provide us with a sense of belonging. The reason I am reaching out is to share the details of an incredible event that's happening for the first time ever, the local police department coming together to spend time and build a sense of community with the neurodiverse population in Milpitas. A huge thanks goes to Surgeon Speckenhorer for taking the first step in making Milpitas a welcoming place for me and my neurodiverse peers by working with the Pragna Allies for change, our students and young adults, including Pragna Club officers at Milpitas High School. To make this the first of a series of events on March 12, 2022, this event is planned to happen from 11 to 1 at the Strickruth Park in Milpitas. This is a free event, but you do need to register for it. Everyone is welcome for this event. Thank you for the time, I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tran. We'll see you Saturday. Right, now I would like to do my COVID report. We have some changes this board meeting. First, we have good news about the case rate, and in particular amongst those who are vaccinated. You could see that for the vaccinated, the case rate as of March 4th is 10 out of 100,000, and that is down by 176 since the last time I reported, which was a month ago. And for the unvaccinated, it is down to 54.1 per 100,000, which is down 554.1 since a month ago. And overall, the case rate is 12 out of 100,000, which is down 238.6. So things are definitely looking up. Here, we have what our vaccinated case rate is. It's very exciting to see that amongst ages 5 through 17, the vaccination rate is now at 90.4%. This past weekend, we had a vaccine clinic at Rancho, and they had about 83 students or young people come through for their vaccine. And this is up 20.2% since last month. Those who are eligible for a booster, it's up 6.4% to 68.8%. And amongst all ages for vaccination, the increase is 0.8%. Looking at our COVID cases, comparing to a month ago when I reported, we are now at a total of 984 cases, which is up-- we are now at a total of 984 cases, which is up 98 from the last month. But if you consider that the prior two-week reporting period prior to February 7th, at that point in time, we were up 353. So there's a tremendous decrease. And here, this will be the last time I share this data just to show you that our substitute rate for vacant substitute positions has greatly fallen. It is now something that is much more manageable. And I would like to talk now about bridging from the surge to the endemic. We've heard from the California Public Health Department, as well as the Santa Clara County Public Health Department and the governor, that as of March 14th, the current required mask requirement to mask in schools will be changed to strongly recommended. So we will not discourage anybody from wearing a mask. As a matter of fact, we are encouraging, strongly encouraging people to continue to wear masks. However, it is not a mandate. And also, the CDC has created this website because they have taken steps to redefine the level of COVID in a community. And you see that if it's low, the recommendations are to stay updated and get tested. If the risk is medium, then those who are at risk of serious illness should make sure that they keep their distance and wear masks. And if it's high, everybody is recommended to wear a mask. So if you look at Santa Clara County, you could see that we are low. And again, bridging from surge to endemic, this means that our testing is going to be changing. Testing now is no longer the sole responsibility of schools. This is a responsibility that is a collective responsibility. The government has made it accessible for families to have tests in the home. You can receive free tests online. You can also, for those of you with insurance, you can have your cost of a test reimbursed. And in the event that you need to demonstrate that you have a negative test, there is the attestation form that you can use for school for your testing. The other way that you can get a test is here in Milpitas, we have weekly testing at the community center as well as the sports center. And we are going to be moving to something called COVID Clinic. At six of our school sites, we will have testing for our students, our staff, and their families. So we'll hear more about that next week. And our new slogan is "Safety First, Testing For All." I'd like now to highlight our MUSD navigators. We did hear from Principal Claudia Cadenas and Kristen Prolo a few board meetings ago. And this evening, we get to see a small snapshot of the video that Mr. Forsner and Mr. Flashner worked on with our teachers and principals over at Robert Randall World Languages School. And this is our time for making sure everybody knows of this great opportunity in our city, which is open to all students, TK through 6th grade, who would like to have second language capability. We heard earlier from Ms. Norma Morales, who has a key to the city, in part because of the way that she's able to communicate with people who speak Spanish as well as English. And this spring also, you will be having stakeholder meetings where we hear from our families and our community about what the next language should be added to the World Languages School. So with that, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Forsner, to roll them.
I go to Robert Randall Elementary School, and it's a really good school.
One of the benefits that I've seen from my daughter since she started at Randall is her pride in being able to communicate with other people in a language other than her native language. Whenever we go to the store, she's always so excited when she hears someone speaking Spanish, that she can talk to them and show off her Spanish language skills. One of my favorite things about the school is the school community that she's joined.
It's my sixth year here, and I first started in kindergarten, where I mostly knew Polish and just a little bit of English. Now, as a fifth grader, I know a lot of Spanish.
When she comes home from school, she'll try to teach us the new words and the new concepts she's learned at school. Sometimes we'll play like school, and we have a whiteboard, so she'll stand in front there and write the new vocabulary words or the new concepts and try to teach us Spanish as well. If I was talking to another parent who was considering Randall, I would say, do it. Have your child go to Randall. I think there are a lot of great things about Randall that I appreciate and that my family appreciates. One is the teachers. They're really caring and supportive. The second is just the community. It's kind of a smallish school, and so we have a lot of great parents who all work together to make the school community even better, both in PTA and outside of it.
I would tell them that it's really fun learning Spanish. It might be hard sometimes, but it's really, really fun and exciting. And I really love learning at Randall.
In Randall Elementary School, ayuda me con mis matemáticas.
My favorite thing about being a student here at Randall is that I'm able to make friends and have more connections.
Sometimes I speak Spanish to help my aunt learn her Spanish because she's learning her Spanish at home.
The most important thing I want people to take away is that if you don't speak Spanish at home, that's not a concern for having your student learn Spanish at Randall. My daughter helps me. We work together. There's tools provided. The community and the teacher support is amazing. So please don't let that be something that would hold you back in your decision-making process, because choosing Randall is one of the best things that I've done for my daughter's education.
Thank you very much for your work on that. And now I'd like to invite our middle college, high school team to come up for their principal's report. We have Ms. Liz Ridley, we have Mandy Lau, Michael Makatangai, and Principal Teresa Scott, and our students.
Okay, good evening, Board members and district leaders and community stakeholders. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present about the Milpitas Middle College High School. We've been asked to give a report regarding attendance and engagement at our school, which aligns to the strategic goal of focusing our services and support systems to elicit engagement from our students, as well as ensure their academic and social emotional success. We have, as you know, gone through an extended period prior to this year of distance learning. And as a result, there's been many students who have understandably struggled with engagement. It has adversely affected their engagement. And at the Milpitas Middle College High School, we have come up with a comprehensive strategy to address that. Can I have the slides presented? So as he does that, the comprehensive strategy includes three distinct components. They are culture, curriculum, and community. And these three components have been applied, and the results include a 98% attendance rate for the first semester. It also includes 100% of our students successfully completing all of their college coursework that they attempted the first semester. So we're very proud of them for that. And I would like to now invite the staff and students to share a little bit more about those three components, starting with Denise Squenka.
Can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So these are our school-wide learning outcomes. These school-wide learning outcomes were collaboratively created by students, staff, as well as our school site council, which has been, which consists of both community members as well as parents of middle college students. So something that I have found that has really upped my engagement with the middle college is the positive culture that surrounds each and every classroom. I found that I was not afraid to ask any questions or share my thoughts about our lessons in front of my teacher as well as my fellow students. Another thing that has got me more engaged with the middle college is the relevant curriculum provided by the school. I've found that the curriculum that the school provides really touches with my values as both a student as well as a human being. To further talk about our curriculum, I would like to give attention to both of my teachers, Mr. Makatangai and Ms. Lau.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Makatangai. I currently teach Honors, US History at the Middle College, but I also teach World History and Government at MHS. In regards to curriculum, I mostly want to focus on the time periods we're given at the Middle College, which is 75 minutes, as opposed to the 56 minutes at MHS. This gives us a space to really increase our rigor on the campus, as well as develop skills such as reading analysis, inquiry-based projects, as well as argumentative writing. Furthermore, it allows us to increase individualized meeting time with our students within the class period, in which we could address specific strengths and weaknesses that they may have. It also allows us the freedom for deeper dive into content, allowing us to make further connections, whether it's culturally or historically or within modern times. I'll now hand it over to Mrs. Lau Manluco.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mrs. Lau Manluco. I'm the English 11 Honors Curriculum Teacher at Milpitas Middle College High School. I wanted to talk about two things. The first is our Community Impact Project, which allows students to engage in their passion project. So they get to research a topic of their choice. Some of the topics include AI ethics, the school-to-prison pipeline, and the treatment of Black women in the healthcare industry, or the mistreatment of Black women in the healthcare industry. And this is where we provide student support to assist them in finding solutions, which they will implement this year and next year. The other thing that I wanted to address was some of the authentic assessments that we provide, some of which have a real audience. So one of the examples is when they presented their top three college choices to their families and to members of our SJCC community for judging. They also recently participated in debates where students engaged through interdependency, and they had a focus on how socioeconomic standing can impact a student's education. And we got 100% attendance of speakers from students because they had to rely on each other for these teams in debates. I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mira, one of our students.
You can go to the next slide. I wanted to talk a little bit about the community at the Middle College. And first, I wanted to touch on the aspect of student collaboration. Just last semester, we all took statistics together, or at least most of us. And through this, we were able to form many study groups and form many study times in order to be able to pass the class, which, as Ms. Scott mentioned, we all did. And I think that the major reason why we did was because of the amount of times I've just been able to text people in the class saying, do you understand this concept? Or could you explain this to me? Or form study groups around this. Peer accountability is another thing that's a cornerstone of our community. For example, texting and calling each other when we're absent, or, as I said before, simply just asking if we need clarity on a topic or if we need more understanding of a certain topic in class, whether that be high school or college classes. And having more students in the classes, for example, in the cohort model, having students in classes together helps us to be able to form another cornerstone of our community. For example, this semester, most of our students, or at least, I believe, seven of our students are taking the biology course. And because so many of them are taking it together, many of them are forming study groups as they have last semester. And it's a class that's very rigorous, and so having these cohort models helps us to be able to pass these classes and to have a community in these classes. The three cohorts that we do have are business, education and social work, and health sciences. And having these basically just help us in making our career in the future. Another thing that students help to do to help just give back to the school that's helped us so much is having Family Fun Fridays in the student store. Both are student-created and help to up student engagement and get community service hours and generally just bond with us. And Ms. Scott's going to talk to you about our open house.
I just wanted to say that we do have an open house recruitment barbecue this Friday. You guys are invited. Go to our website, please, if you'd like to RSVP to that. And I just wanted to remind our community that the application window is open through this month. So we'd really like to have you apply and give you the opportunity to be part of this community. So thank you so much for your attention. Appreciate it.
What are your enrollment numbers now for next year? How many more students are you looking to get enrolled?
What we're hoping to do is enroll a second cohort, a junior cohort of about 25 to 28 students, and then add in additional 10 students to our existing cohort. So we'll have a graduating class that matches that. So we'd look at being at approximately between 55 and 60 students next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a question, I just have a comment. And that is that it's thrilling to see a school community that really is collaborative between learners and teachers so that actually everybody is a learner. And I appreciate just the dedication that each of you has to making this a success.
Superintendent Jordan, I could also just echo that. I think that Milpitas Middle College has been just an incredible example of both innovation and community coming together. I think from what I've witnessed, the classrooms really display deep rigor in the content and the work that you're doing. And then there's also innovation happening with the Community Impact Project, as well as the collaboration with the college courses and creating the pathways there.
And I'll just add from the HR perspective, having the right teachers and support staff in place has been amazing. They are a true testament to innovation and a cultural responsiveness. And I know our students adore them, because when I visit, that's all they talk about, is how much they love their teachers.
Yes, and I'd like to add that, you know, during that time, I went and did the presentation. I was quite impressed how the students were so, they were so engaged, right? And I really enjoyed just that communication going back and forth. And yeah, I just couldn't, you know, say more than what they did. But I'm really impressed with you guys. So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for the encouragement. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the cabinet reports, we'll start with Executive Director Priti Jari.
Then I can add one more thing about middle college. We actually, in terms of just how real the community give-back projects are, we had one of the students from Middle College earlier this March, March, February, present. At our last Curriculum and Policy Committee meeting, we had a student present about the importance of representation in curriculum to a host of adults. There was teachers, administrators, district leaders all at the meeting, and she facilitated a discussion amongst us about why representation matters and what change could look like in our curriculum process in MUSD. So it's real work that's happening and having an impact. So that was my anecdote. And my official report that I wanted to share was that I'm also very excited to share with you updates on our ongoing work, specifically on the LCAP. Last time I was here, I was trying to drum up engagement in our thought exchange survey. Over the course of February, we had over 600 people participate in the survey. This included people from all of our schools and sites across the district, all our different participant groups. We had teachers, classified, parents, students, representation from our English Language Learner Program, Special Education Program, Foster Youth Program. So it was just, we were very excited about the participation that happened. They shared over 865 different unique thoughts. And then there was real engagement with that process as well. There were over 11,000 ratings that happened in that process. The District LCAP Advisory Committee, also a group that represents stakeholders from across the district, met and worked together for the first time last week. We are starting to unpack two major themes that I'm We are starting to unpack two major themes that emerged from all of this feedback. First theme is specifically around the need for social emotional learning, and the other is around reading support and resources. The next committee meeting will be in late March. One other update is that the Culture of We Equity team is also launching a listening campaign this month. We are reaching out to different stakeholder groups and departments across MUSD and requesting 20 minutes at regularly scheduled meetings to push forward, push forward and engage in dialogue with the team, the different departments. The conversation will be starting with two anchor questions. What are the ways that our departments or sites have worked to increase racial equity, access, resources, opportunities, and growth? What work still needs to be done around racial equity at your site or in your department? What are those needs? We hope that this listening campaign and these conversations will inform the development of future board policies, specifically the equity policy. And now I'll hand it over to my co-executive director, Ms. Dorpinghaus.
Good evening. As Executive Director Johari shared, this is a time where we're looking ahead for next year, but we're also firmly planted still in this year and have much time, much work to still complete before the end of the year. So we have this tension of thinking ahead and planning for right now as well, and implementing all those things that we have. In that light, we have continued our committee work, specifically with our inclusion collaborative team, and they are continuing to meet monthly on that, as we look at how do we support our students who are neurodiverse across various levels within the district, through the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems and support structures, and through various models across the district. Another one of our committees that we've been actively engaged in is we launched our dyslexia committee with our staff right now, as we work to create plans on how we can improve our assessments of students with dyslexia, screening for it, intervention, and staff development. We continue to offer our ongoing Sped for You trainings, which is for our new special education staff, and I just want to say a shout out to all the staff who are willing to give their time, their expertise, their willingness to learn and be a learner, as we work through areas of program improvement and continue to have a continuous improvement within our district in how we serve our community. This concludes our LND report this evening.
Thank you. Let's go now to Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Wendy Jung.
Thank you, Cheryl. Tonight, I would like to provide an update regarding our district-wide digital marquee project. I would like to share a screen and to show you some of the design we have. We were able to meet with each site principal to come up with the design of our digital marquee. And so this is our Palmroy and Randall, Rose and Spangler, Zenit, Weller, Zanker and Russell. Then Meadows High School, Burnett, Kurtner. Those two, they are already up running, and as well as Orangeos, they just installed this. So for the other side, and we're hoping by this summer, before school starts, we can finish the installation, and then all the digital markeys at each site are up running. So that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. That's exciting to see those, and we'll be able to put out mass communication all at once.
Yes, and also I would like to appreciate the each school site PTA and or PTO for their support. The district has provided funding to purchase the marquee, and the PTA will help to provide the funding for the installation.
Thank you. Thank you to our PTAs.
Yes.
And Assistant Superintendent HR, Mr. Jonathan Brunson.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Short report tonight with the theme of keeping our feet planted in this year, but also looking into next year and the horizons of what we need to do. We have opened positions for next school year and are experiencing the transfer process with the new negotiated language with MTA. It's been going well, and I'm thankful for the folks that love staying at their schools, so there's not many transfer requests, which means that we'll be posting these positions within the networks that we use, as well as social media, to attract only the best to join our teams here. I've also been recruiting at area universities virtually still, and hopefully we'll get into person on a couple of them. But we've visited Sanaslaw State, which is in the central part of the state near Stockton, UC Davis, and most recently National University, and we're already connecting folks to the open positions here in the district. And let's see, last but not least, oh, I got invited to go visit a teacher's classroom, Kelsey Taku over at Kurtner Elementary, Go Eagles, and it was fun to see the many projects that the students were learning. We transitioned to recess when I was told I was now recruited to play basketball, and I was a gym rat once upon a time, but this body thinks it can do things that it used to, but not so well. But I will give Kelsey a shout out. She has game, and she scored most of our points. My job was to pass the ball, but it was a lot of fun. And our former custodian, Marcus Anelis, was just showing how classified and teachers can work together with our students and create fond memories, and it was just an enjoyable day to end my week. That's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
Alrighty, thank you so much for the reports. Now we're moving on to item 14, Board Group Agreements. Vice President Chris Norwood.
The Board Group Agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. Per Bylaw 9001 amended on November 26, 2019, board members and superintendents agree to keep learning and achievement for all students as primary focus, ask questions for our own understanding, be open and honest with each other, no surprises, includes unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and or board. Be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and keep time and energy, and commit the time and energy necessary to be informed and effective leader. Actively support Culture of We and Action Deed and Opportunity to serve the students and the parents of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. We're moving on to item 15, Board Communication Request. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from staff. The student board representative reports on school and student activities. Reports are limited to 90 seconds. So let's start with the virtual students first. Is Kimberly or Sydney available?
Yes, we have both on there. I guess we could start with our Cal Hills rep, Kimberly Lopez. Go right ahead. There she is.
Hello. The leadership and club, and Lions Club are helping the organization called Danny on Wheels. With the money they have raised, they are also doing a St. Patrick's Day cookie fundraiser. And Cal Hills will be partnering with Adult Ed to have a college.
Oops, I think her connection froze. Let's see if... Okay, we'll get back to Student Board Rep Lopez.
Bottom of a life skill.
Oh, there we go.
For all students, and previously, Cal Hills partnered with the city of Milpitas for a bipartisan financial literacy series for all students. As for other updates, Cal Hills is going to have a Cal Hills April Academy to have school open during the April break for students for extended learning and credits. Details about it ourselves to find. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now Student Board Rep Wong from Milpitas High School.
Hello. Good evening, board members and attendees. This is Sydney Ho, Student Board Rep from Milpitas High School. March is a new month and is as busy as ever. However, with all the buzzing activity comes along with a lot of unification and more school spirit. Next week specifically, March 14 to 18, is Day Something Week. It celebrates upstanders in communities as well as trusted adults to ensure a safer community where every individual feels represented and valued. Additionally, there is Trojan Olympics coming up on the very first day of April. All involved students will be preparing dances and practicing games to compete against the other classes and hopefully win the event. Students will gather to collaborate in the spirit of competition. With much effort put into this, I believe that many people will gain a sense of achievement and feel as though their work is amplified through the Milpitas community. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mira, would you like to attend? Yeah, yes, please.
Hi, school board and various community members that are present here today. March is a big month for the middle college with many recruitment opportunities happening and the start to the midterm season. As you can see, we just had our board report about our school's community, curriculum, and culture. Other than this, we have our open house, as Ms. Scott just mentioned, in order to update parents on the activities for our school and to educate incoming students about our school. You all are, of course, welcomed. We are also recruiting students at MHS every week and having student and staff-led application workshops in order to help hopeful students with the application process and to answer questions about our school. This week, we have our WASC accreditation visit happening on Thursday. All of our student body will be interviewed during this visit. We have our community impact projects that are currently, that we are currently brainstorming solutions for. Board members are welcome to come to our classroom and help in any way they please in order to help our students achieve their solution. Solutions range from events to fundraising to workshops, so any connections or help that you would like to provide would be helpful. We'd also like to thank Ms. Stewart for visiting us and teaching us more about mental health. Thank you, and that is my report.
Thank you, Mira. Board members, hi.
Good evening, everyone. So I had a lot of activities. I'll keep it brief. Went to anniversary dinner for alumni association, went to the SCC SBA legislative brunch virtually, and SCC SBA Zoom meeting. I also was at the Chinese New Year Parade. And I'll keep it brief, so that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Leanne.
Yes, for the past, since the last special board meeting, I attended the Innovation Campus Luncheon and Department of Tax last week. That's my report.
Thank you. Clip now.
Yes, good evening. I attended the Santa Clara School Boards Association meeting, also their legislative brunch meeting, and also attended the Milpitas Rory meeting and the Innovation Campus Lunch as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood.
I'd like to yield the time on the activities and ask the superintendent regarding when would we actually get the equity policy? I know that we, it came to us originally, and then we decided that we weren't going to move forward on it without the complete district being involved in determining what that equity policy is. And I know that was a while ago, and we've been very, very busy, so I'm looking for a timeline on that.
So Executive Director Johari mentioned that in her overview, and the Culture of We Equity team is working on it. This past Wednesday during their retreat, they discussed it in more detail, and they, I told Executive Director that we need to have it so that we can do the three readings of it, as it's a new board policy, and have opportunity for the board to discuss it at a study session. So that brings us to probably the first board meeting in May.
Thank you. And the other question is that Assistant Superintendent Brunson talked about the recruiting time, and I'd like to know at some point, what makes our package different than the other school districts? I know that one of the things that we were talking about was around trying to be able to provide some sort of rental housing, or what other things are we doing that makes our district stand out in comparison to others right now during this teacher shortage? So if we can come back with that at some point, knowing how we are able to differentiate ourselves from others, so that we can have the best of the best, as we talked about, for our students.
Not a problem. That's also on our whiteboard for a report on our employee assistance program, as well as that we can include recruiting, because part of the employee assistance program includes onboarding.
Thank you. And I yield the time for, as far as any other activities.
Okay, thank you. And for me, I attended the SBA meeting and the legislative brunch, MUSD Innovation Campus Luncheon at Bayview, and the chamber meeting. Okay, action item A, Business Services, approve Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club request authorization. Well, normally, this item is under Business Services. We bring this up each year for board to review and approval under the consent item. However, for this particular item, I would like to turn it over to our superintendent, since staff and superintendent has been worked with our high school principal in regards this matter. So Cheryl.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Jung. So I have not been working with our principal on this, however, in the spring, when recommended to the board that they make as a prerequisite for approval of the operation of the Athletic Boosters Club from Milpitas High School, two of those prerequisites were to assure that we have sound practices for the, for the banking records, which are included as an attachment to this item, and then also updated and more clear bylaws, because the ambiguity of the bylaws seemed to be part of what contributed to the dissension amongst the members last spring. And so Principal Rojas, who has been working with some former athletic director, Mr. Jeff Lamb, as well as community member, Mr. Joseph Weinstein, and the leaders of the ABC, to have the bylaws rewritten and approved, and tonight, they are here along with our current athletic director, Joanna Butcher, to share what the board, what the bylaws are, and also to answer any questions that the board has. And then the recommendation is to approve the bylaws, excuse me, to approve the operation of the Athletic Booster Club. So Principal Rojas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. I hope everyone can hear me. Sounds like it. So I'm here tonight with Athletic Booster Club leaders, Irma Gonzalez and David Crum. President Ferdi Santano regrets he can't be here tonight because of a work commitment. But as you recall, at the board meeting held on June 8, 2021, the MUSD Board of Education and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, as Cheryl just explained, made recommendations that ABC must put in place in order to gain board approval for operations. And so over the last month, our Milpitas Athletic Booster Club has worked with Joseph Weinstein and Jeff Lamb to develop new bylaws with their membership and the community to meet those recommendations, and they are here with us tonight. We'll start with Joseph to summarize the steps taken by ABC to satisfy the recommendations by the school district.
Joseph, we can't hear you. You gotta unmute.
Thank you, Principal Rojas, Superintendent Jordan, and everyone who helped. We really appreciate the process that everybody went through, the district, board members who helped, and suggested volunteers, but most importantly, the parents and the community members that met with us, and finally, Robert Jung and his team, who really helped put together the actual bylaws in regard to the regulations for nonprofits of California. A number of community members wanted to understand the process. I'll go over it quickly. We had two open community meetings where everybody was invited. We met with the Booster Club Board We met with the Booster Club board members a number of times. We either met or had direct phone conversations with every single person who wanted to give us input into the bylaws. We contacted the State Board of Education for guidance. We talked with the fiscal crisis management assistant team from the state to talk about issues in regard to the boosters, and the bylaws have been written with all of those things in consideration. And finally, we met with and/or reviewed the bylaws of 11 different booster clubs within and outside of California. Bylaws were constructed based on all of this, and we believe that they're great bylaws and can serve the Booster Club for years.
Thank you, Joseph. Jeff, would you like to add any comments on the process?
Yeah, thanks. We did reach out to, I'm still on the State Board for Athletic Directors, and I reached out to them and got, that was where a lot of our examples came from throughout the state of California. And so we used those in doing this. And we also tried to formulate bylaws that would not just fit the people who are there now, but would go on for years and years and years. That's something that we need to be changed. And the one thing I'd like to remind people is that while the Athletic Booster Club is there to help raise money for the athletic programs, it is also about community building. So that's why we want to keep our parents involved in this. And so there's just some things there that we, that we want to make sure that we're inclusive with everybody, no matter what their financial capabilities are to join, that we just really want to make sure that we have community members involved and that anyone who wants to be involved can be involved.
Thank you, Joseph and Jeff. And so tonight, what we're presenting is the OP-15. The Athletic Booster Club on January 31st, 2022, at their general meeting, approved the new bylaws for their organization, and it was forwarded on to me, together with a new OP-15 to bring to the board. And I recommend this for approval because of the process that the board and the membership and our community went through to develop these new bylaws. And there's some urgency behind this because we are nearing the end of the school year, and we have not been able to access funds to support our teams. And our athletic director, Joanna Butcher, is here with us tonight to explain some of the immediate needs that we need to work collaboratively with our Athletic Booster Club for these next final months of the school year. Joanna?
Hi, thank you. Bedtime, so I'm camera's off. I apologize. For thinking about the end of the year, we've had a few things happen with small gym, a few other things outside of our control. And so we're just thinking about uniforms that we've had to purchase and the fact that we've had moratorium in regards to buying uniforms over the last couple of years because of COVID, and so there's going to be a tremendous amount of teams that all need supplies and going into the following year. And we need to put those purchases in by the first week of April in order to actually have any of the supplies come by August due to, we all know that there are many, many factories that have shut down in regards to production. And so we have to plan so many months ahead of time. We also want to hold the first in-person Murphy Awards in three years, which is a booster-supported event, as they usually in the past have been able to provide the funding for all the awards. They hand out the scholarships usually at this event as well, and recognizing all of the teams and the successes that we've had throughout the year. And so boosters are the vital part of that, and we really want them to be part of this event as well.
Thank you, Joanna. And I think another big part that the boosters, we need, they're really, I'm tongue-tied right now, we need a lot of their help to close out this year is to help organize our golf tournament, which is the biggest fundraiser for our athletics program. And so I believe in the audience today, we have Irma and David. Are they present there?
Yes, they are.
Yes. May I ask them to come forward to explain some of the immediate actions that they need to take around elections, scholarships, inventory, the golf tournament, and so forth, once this is approved by the board?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Principal Rojas. Yes, you did touch on quite a few of the events that we need to focus on so that we can complete this, this school year successfully. Ms. Butcher mentioned the team grants that we provide the various sports teams, and many of them need uniforms. The Murphy Awards, yes, we'd like to participate in that, and mentioned the scholarships. That's really important. We're coming to the end of the school year. We have to put our scholarship team together and identify the students and get them to apply and issue some of those scholarships. Since COVID hit, things have been kind of slow at the school, so we hope that a lot of students do come forward and apply for sports scholarships. And it was also mentioned at the golf tournament, it is one of our biggest fundraisers. And again, because of COVID, we haven't been able to have that fundraiser in the last couple of years. We are working behind the scenes anyway to plan and coordinate this. We've got a date and I believe a new location as well. So we really need to be able to come back on the school premises, have our visibility, and put our team together so that we can really focus and get all these activities done. Time is of the essence, so we would greatly appreciate your support and your approval on our new and updated bylaws. Anything else you'd like to mention?
Just the time is of essence. We have, I have no idea with our inventory, what was bad or what's been in the storage or in the concessions. We need to go through that and see what we need for all these future events and prepare the costs and everything.
We still have a few months left for this school year, and it would be really nice if we can get back on the premises and provide our concession stands available to the different sports teams and the public that come, the parents that come to support their kids. We have not been able to do that since, for quite a while because of COVID and because of our suspension, and we'd really like to get back on campus and participate with the students, the faculty, and be supportive of Joanna Butcher and the department.
And also, I do believe there's some commitments to the teams. We already partially paid for some uniforms. I don't know what the status is as far as them being paid, like Ms. Butcher says, so we'll have to get together with her on those.
I'd like to mention one last thing, too, is that even though COVID and our suspension has kept us off the premises, we still have been maintaining and keeping the business part of the club active and going. We've been focusing on some of our back taxes that were not paid for a few years. We're getting all that caught up. I'm happy to report our financials are in order, and we continue to do fundraising off-campus because we're focused and dedicated to supporting our teams.
Thank you, Irma and David. And I believe Ms. Butcher wanted to add one more comment.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to touch on something Jeff had said in regards to community. Because we've been in our pandemic, our membership has been lower, and one of the things that they've really focused on with the strength of these new outstanding bylaws, which, thank you, Joseph, on that one. In order to work on our community building, we need to have a set foundation before we start school in August, because otherwise, we are going to be not able to present and grow our membership if we are not established during the spring.
Thank you, Joanna. And so my conversations with President Ferdi Santano, he mentioned to me that elections and membership will be a priority in these next couple of months. And as the board will see in the summary, we recommend to develop an approval of the items listed under section, Article 9, Section F of the new strengthened ABC bylaws around operating documents, specifically general meeting procedures, cash handling procedures, code of conduct, membership recruitment procedures and forms. So it is the ABC's leadership priority to get those items done in the relaunch of their, of their organization, on top of continuing to prepare and organize for elections, raise money for scholarships, and support our athletic program in collaboration with Joanna Butcher, our athletic director, who is present at every meeting moving forward. So that concludes our presentation of the process that we went through collaboratively with the community, ABC leadership, and the school to strengthen the ABC bylaws so that they continue, they can continue the good work that they've done and in the future prevent conflict or misunderstanding because of the vagueness of the bylaws. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Are there any public comments out there?
We have no hands raised, no public comments at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now it is open for discussion with board members?
Yeah, no, I did have a question. In reviewing the bylaws, and you know, there was mention of the OP-15 and the certificate of liability, it's listing Milpitas High School Athletic Booster Club while the bylaws mention Milpitas High Athletic Booster Club. Were you aware of that discrepancy?
Yes.
And is there? Can I, can I answer that for you?
Sure.
Yeah, so when we were reviewing the bylaws, the state now requires educational institutional nonprofit organizations to be 501(c)(3)'s. These, the past bylaws were done 40 years ago. At that point in time, the law allowed any 501(c)(3), c)(4), et cetera, to exist. So we had to request the Booster Club to change the name of the bylaw, and in changing the name with the process that they had to go through at the state, they couldn't use the exact same name. They could only use the exact same initials. So everybody involved in this was very, very aware of it, and it did come at the request of us because we found out that it was a legal requirement. Great, thank you so much for explaining that discrepancy there.
You know, I review the bylaws. I didn't see anything about like who could or could not be signers on checks. But what I was looking for, I guess, is that, you know, in one of my PTA, I guess, early on, I was a PTA president, and I went to some trainings, and they were talking about that, you know, a treasurer and a secretary should not be signers at the same time to avoid embezzlements. You know, we don't expect that to happen, but it did happen in the past, not here, but you know, for them to use it as an example, is that, you know, something to consider in adding to your bylaws at some point? Mr. Weinstein?
So in regard to that, that did come up during the discussion. The reason that we didn't put it in the bylaws is because we are going to be, well, let me rephrase that. Booster Club is going to be writing standard operating procedures, and when we checked with a finance person, they said that as long as it's in the standard operating procedures, that that would be the same effect as the bylaws because the Booster Club has to approve those. That may have been a bad decision on our part, but we felt that as long as was included in the standard operating procedures, which Principal Rojas has already pointed out, they've got to get done within 90 days. We thought we could handle it that way. Apologize if that was a mistake.
No, thank you. Thank you for answering my question. Any anything else? And can you explain about the 90 days that, I think it was on here? It was on the?
Operating documents to be reviewed by the MHS Athletic Director and Principal within 90 days of MUSD Board approval.
Can you please give an explanation?
Yes, so basically, while we were doing the bylaws, we recognized that there are a number of different procedures that the Booster Club being separate also has to be accountable to the school district by law for operation. So what we thought is rather than delay the bylaws, what we would do is give the Booster Club a 90-day period with which to write approved bylaws. And then, you know, for example, in regard to the financial issues, Vice President, I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent Wendy is an auditor. And so what we thought we would do is kind of write those things and have her review those before it came to the board for approval.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just mentioned that, you know, thank you so much for the presentation and the work to really come together and put this updated bylaws together. I know that, you know, from a student-athlete perspective and supporting the programs, you know, the Booster Club is necessary on the campus. So thank you so much for making that progress and really coming today with these updated bylaws, and hopefully, I think Principal Rojas mentioned, you know, to prevent any misunderstanding in the future so that the program can continue to support the student-athletes on the campus.
Yes, and thank you very much for your dedication to the, you know, students, especially those in sports. You know, they really need the Booster Team to, you know, fundraise for, you know, many things, right? Uniforms, programs, whatever, you know? And, you know, to Joseph, to Jeff, you know, thank you so much for the time spent in putting the bylaws together. We do want to move forward, and we, you know, hope that, you know, moving forward, this provides better clarification, and we can all work together in supporting, you know, our goals for the students. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So the motion on the table is to approve the OP-15 for the Booster Club.
Right, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no other further comments or questions, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Nell.
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood.
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Asses five oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to action item 16B, I mean, 16A2. Adopt the 2021/22 Second Interim Report and Submit a Positive Financial Certification to the Santa Clara County Office of Education. Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Yes, our Business Services Department finished our second interim update. So tonight, we prepared a short presentation. Before we go into the presentation, I would like to spend just a few minutes to walk you through our attachments in the board agenda. There are five documents. The first one is our second interim income statement. The income statement will provide you a summary of each fund, revenue expenditure, and ending fund balance. And here is also our multi-year projection worksheet, and this is the standardized summary sheet that we share with you for each major budget update. This is the second page. And this time, the difference we did is, in the past, we this time, the difference we did is, in the past, we have this report and we normally list it under the background. And this time, I think it's easier if we make it a document. And this document summarizes all the changes for each major category compared to the sex, the state form. So this will give you a better way of to read instead of just go through the board agenda. And also we listed the multi-year projection factors in the detail here for your reference. The next document is standardized state form. We call the S A X form. There are overall total one hundred forty one pages here, but our income statement, our multi-year projection, along with our second interim report will provide you all the information that you need to understand instead of go through this standardized state report. So with that, and I will turn it over to our Director of Business Services, Shani Yan, and we'll start with, with a short, a short presentation for tonight then. Let me share. Okay, here we go.
Good evening, board members and cabinet members. And I would also like to invite our Business Services Supervisor, Duke, and he will start with the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight we are going to present the second interim budget update. And as a local educational agency, every year we are required to have two interim report. The first interim for the period activities are up to October thirty first and the second interim that's up to January thirty first, two thousand twenty two. So that's the two report we have to file during the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So there are three selection on certification that we have to make a choice. And every selection represents its meaning. For positive means the district will meet its financial obligation for the current years and two subsequent years. And the qualify means the district may not meet its financial obligation for the current year or two subsequent years. And the negative means the district will not be able to meet its financial obligation for the remaining of the current year or the two subsequent years. So tonight we go into, ask the board to certify the positive certification. And now I would like to pass it on to Shani to go over the financial update.
So at the second interim budget projection, our total projected general fund revenue is a hundred and forty eight point three millions. It is an increase of seven point eight millions compared to the first interim. And within our general fund revenue, seventy sixty seven percent of it comes from L C F F funding. And the next one is other state revenue, composed to be ten percent of the total general fund revenue. The next one is our federal revenues, consists of nine percent of the total general fund revenue. And then the next one is special ed education revenue. And then the rest is other local revenues and transfer in. The half, four millions of the increase contributed to the one-time new state program that I was here on the February board meeting presented to you the mid-year outcap for the new state programs. It is added to during our second interim budgeting. Next one. Our second interim projected general fund expenditure is a hundred and fifty four point nine millions. It is an eight point two million dollar increase compared to the first interim. Eighty percent of our total general fund expenditures consist of salary and benefits and nine percent goes to books and supplies, seven percent to other operating expenditures, which includes utilities, insurance, professional and consulting services, travel and conference, dues and memberships, repairs and equipment leases. And the rest of the four percent goes to other outgoats and uses, which includes payment to J P As like Metro Ed and It's Valley Student Transportation Agency, School Transportation Agency, and also a payment to the county office program. And then next Assistant Superintendent Wendy will go into the changes compared to first interim.
Okay, thank you, Shani and Duke. Thank you for your good work on our second interim update. Most of you, you probably have already heard or received information from some organizations, for example, maybe AXA, CASV and C S B A on possible changes in school funding. This is a summary of the three key legislation updates on L C F F changes. L C F F stands for Local Control Funding Formula. This is our largest income source. Under A B Assembly Bill sixteen oh seven, starting with twenty two, twenty three year, the district can use a three-year rolling average for A D A calculation, which including current year A D A plus the prior two years. If this proposal passes, it will replace the current methodology for the district to calculate L C F F. The current way of calculation is based on only the current year and the prior year A D A, whichever is greater. So, right now, in Governor Newsom's January state budget proposal for next year, he actually used the same way of calculation. And currently for our second interim budget projection for the coming year A D A, we followed this methodology. And this will bring us additional one hundred A D A compared to the original way. A B sixteen oh nine, it allows school district to continue to use the nineteen twenty A D A just for one-time only next year. So among the three options, this will be the best option for the district. This, because our nineteen twenty A D A was about ten thousand if this proposal passes. S B some, Senate Bill eight thirty, this provides the district and a wisdom opportunity to use enrollment data instead of A D A. It, in reality, it really depends on how this proposal works. If the total funding to school district does not increase, this proposal won't benefit the district as much as the previous two. Now let's take a look at the major factors that we used in our second interim. Twenty one, twenty two, this is our current year. We started with A D A, average daily attendance. You can see that at the second interim, our current year A D A reduced by about seven A D A. This is due to some of the special programs, like for example, the students who attended to our county program or non-public schools, we have to use their current year's actual A D A instead of nineteen twenties. We also further reduced our A D A projection for the subsequent two years to reflect the latest enrollment projection. I'll talk more in detail later on. COLA is cost of living adjustment. At the second interim, we updated the subsequent two years COLA projection to reflect with the Governor Newsom's January's proposal. U P P stands for Unduplicated Pupil Percentage. This refers to our English learners, low-income and quality student count. For the current year projection, it went up by three percent. In reality, we, it, this did not mean that we had more English learners and the low-income students. This was due to a system error from the state. And this is a statewide issue this year. The CalPAS data collection system accidentally picked up additional two hundred sixty students from our system, which should not be considered as a U P P for this year. And we, we were informed by the state that we did not have to revise our certification, but definitely this won't happen again next year. Because the U P P is calculated based on a three-years rolling average, it also helped to increase our next two years' projection as well. With the three major factors, here's our L C F F projection at the second interim. Current year, ninety nine point five million, a slight increase compared to the first interim projection. If you recall, back in December, during our budget study session, I shared with you an overall enrollment trend projection for the state of California. At the time, the Department of Finance projected an eleven point four percent decline statewide by twenty thirty one. So now let's take a look at our recent enrollment projection. This data is from a preliminary report of, from our demographer. The black line represents the enrollment projection pre-COVID time. The red line represents our first interim projection back in October twenty twenty one. And this blue line is our current second interim update. As you can see, our enrollment growth projection during the pre-COVID time is a lot higher than what we have projected now. For the current year, twenty one, twenty two, our actual enrollment was ten thousand seventy two students in October. That's our official C B A S report to the state. And starting next year, twenty two, twenty three, we had a slight dip. And then after twenty three, twenty four, we are gradually picking up. So overall, our enrollment is not going to grow as fast as we had anticipated. And because of the enrollment projection change, we will need to adjust our A D A, average daily attendance projection as well. Twenty one, twenty two is our current year, and we were able to use majority of nineteen twenties A D A for our current year's funding. But for next year, twenty two, twenty three, this is our recent projection to reflect our enrollment changes. I also, I want to point out that compared to some other districts in our county who had a significant enrollment decrease, Milpitas is still doing well in that regard. Because after next year, twenty two, twenty three, we're still going to gradually grow, growing. It's just we're not growing as fast as we projected before the COVID time. Here are some other major changes that we applied in our multi-year projections. A five percent salary increase for all staff, the cost is about four point seven million is included. A hundred dollar medical cap increase effective January first, twenty twenty two. So the cost for the current year will be for six months only, a hundred twenty eight thousand. We also removed the one-time funds that carried over from the twenty twenty one year in the next year's budget. Our parcel tax revenue expired on June thirty twenty twenty three, one point six million. And currently, we take it out of our projection under the twenty three, twenty four year. Our contractual obligations for all staff is about one point seven million. That's our step column longevity increase for each year. It is included in our projection. So if you wanted to know how the district is doing financially, a quick reference will be look at our reserve ending fund balance. This summary provide a current projection based on the current available information. Each time when information changes, it will also change in our projection. The first column here, this is our second interim projection for now. I won't spend too much time to go over this tonight because we're actually started working on the budget developing now for twenty two, twenty three. And our second projection year now will be twenty four, twenty five. And we will present that information in, in early June to the board. So by then, all those projections probably will be changed. And so right now, our projection for our reserve is by the end of the third year, we will fully use our reserve fund. And we will need to rely our building fund in the third year to help out balance the budget. With that, our, and our presentation tonight and to ask board to submit a positive certification to the county for our second interim projection. And this concludes our presentation for tonight.
Thank you very much, Shani Duke and Wendy. Do we have public comments?
We have no public comments at this time.
Okay, is there a motion or-
Move to approve the second interim report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there comments or questions from board members?
No questions. I just want to thank the team for this detailed, great work. And it is great to know that we have people who cares. And Wendy always does a good job in projecting very conservatively. And so with that, that's, thank you.
Yes, thank you for the detailed work. And I know how much time and I, you know, it's that you guys spent trying to help us to understand and explaining it to us. I'm still, you know, processing it each time I, I see it, it helps me better to understand it. Are there further questions or comments? If not, we will-
I do have a question. So, thank you, team, for, you know, putting this together. In regards to the multi-year projection, when I look at line seventeen for the books, supply services, utilities and equipment, you know, obviously that jumps out at me in regards to the, you know, from twenty million the previous year to thirty one million. Now I do see the fact that, you know, obviously the federal funds really supplement that as far as the increase of expenditures, but I didn't see that in the, in the summary, the income summary report that you were detailing out or suggested for us to review.
Which summary you are mentioning?
The, you mean this one? This report?
Yeah, correct, in that report. So, you know, obviously you, you did a lot of highlights there. But again, when I looked at the multi-year projection, that did jump out at me that, that I didn't see it as an explanation within the, that-
Okay.
Summary report.
So let me go over that with you, this summary report, how this works. And because you're looking at the two different document. So this summary, what we- So this summary, what we listed here, and you see here, we have column A, B, C, D, E here. And this column, it references to the Saks report. So let me just open one. Let me just use a general fund because we started with a general fund. And then for the general fund, because this report is from the state, it started with general fund unrestricted. So and then it will have a general fund restricted and then a combined. So our summary report is reconciled, reconciled to the combined total. Let me walk, give you just one example how this works. Unrestricted is still. Yeah, maybe, well, I hate to print out this full report because it's a hundred forty pages and.
So I'm not asking for you to print out.
Right, I know, but it will be easier because if I have a hard copy, you can easily just see that number. Basically, while I'm going through this report, we recon, okay, so here's summary, okay, perfect. So summary. And we started, you see A, so you hear in this report, A, B, C, D, so each category. So for example, let's start with A. So A is a revenue. Under A one is talking about LCFF. And then you would notice there is a column E, the difference. And the difference is comparing the projected year, so this is now our second interim, versus what is the board, what is the board-approved operation budget. So the difference is listed here. And then our summary report to explain this difference. For example, let's just look at A one under LCFF sources. And the difference is four hundred ninety-one thousand, right? You see exactly, this is how we reference eight dot one LCFF resource. The changes are four hundred ninety-one thousand, and we explain what is, what caused these changes. So for each major, so for each category listed here, for example, A two, federal income, and the changes is four thousand, miscellaneous changes. And then, and again, under expenditures category B, the books supplies. And we explained the changes between this second interim versus the first interim. Because the original, this board-approved operation budget was what board approved back in October. And the changes is what the changes happened at the second interim versus the first interim. So everything is reconciled, listed in this summary report is referenced to that document. Okay, now go back to multi-year projection. This multi-year projection is a total for the whole fund, whole general fund. And then you, this is just the list, like, for example, in the year of twenty-one twenty-two, that is our current year. This is our second interim. Line number seventeen, thirty-one point three million, that is a total projection for the district, for the total general fund. And then if you compare this thirty-one million versus to last year actual, then the difference, it will be a different reconciliation. And I can help you to understand, so which period you're comparing this to? I mean, do, are you looking at the increase of thirty-one point three million versus last year, the actual is twenty point five million?
Yes, when I look at the multi-year projection, that's my thought process. And thank you for explaining as far as the, you know, income summary report because I didn't connect that with the Saks report versus the multi-year.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Because it depends, so for the second interim, this total thirty-one point three million, most of this are prior year program carryovers and also plus the one-time funds that we received. Because we had about twelve million carryover from twenty twenty-one. And then we also received another five or six million new grants. So most of those grants and their budget is under the supplies. And that's why you see a big jump. And guess what? After we close out this year, you will see, in reality, we're not going to spend thirty-one point three million. And we will have a program carryovers again. And if you notice, next year, twenty-two twenty-three, see, this line item dropped. It dropped by almost twelve, twelve million. That's because we took out those expenditures that fully budgeted in the current year and from next year's projection.
Thank you for that. Yeah, and I also saw, you know, on light item nine, right, as far as the federal fund.
Yes, yeah.
Coincides as far as the drop as well, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, man, for that question. And thank you, Wendy, for that long answer. Do we have any further question?
Wendy and team, I'd like to thank you for your presentation and your hard work. And, well, you answered all my questions already, so thank you.
I'd like to just bring it back to the superintendent, looking at how we, since we have the new enrollment numbers, how we look at increasing enrollment during that lean time based on some of the opportunities that we have. Because there is a, there is a dollar value associated with every less student that we don't have. Know that we also, there's some new schools coming in the city as well that may also affect. So our ability to make sure that everyone knows that Milpitas Unified School District is the best school district to go to in the city of Milpitas. How we do that, I think is going to be very, very important on an ongoing basis. So coming back with a plan on, with a budget of how we're going to do outreach to the entire city about the opportunity to be enrolled in Milpitas schools would be helpful.
Yep, I agree. As we know, Stratford is already at Great Mall, and they're planning a primary grade school where Orchard Supply is and an intermediate grade school on Corning and Main Street. Currently, Stratford at Great Mall is about six hundred and fifty students, and about half of those are Milpitas residents, according to the person I spoke with. And the projection for the other two schools is that they would also be about fifty percent Milpitas residents. And the primary grade school, as I recall, is about a hundred and seventy-five kids total. And so what we have, you're pointing to, is the need to do a campaign about our schools. While we don't have charter schools to compete with, we now have Stratford as a private school industry in our community. And so it's imperative that we do get the word out about our schools and take every opportunity to be public about why Milpitas Unified School District is a unique and special place that can't be measured in dollars.
So I would, I would look for you to look at bringing in the appropriate type of organization to help with us doing that. Marketing and outreach on a continuous basis, and then potentially coming back with the budget so that we can see that return on investment. Because if we, if we just get a hundred students, that would be helpful significantly on an ongoing basis within the district. So we have to think outside of the box to make sure we have a shot to do that. So we have a motion in the second.
Thank you. If there's no more other questions or comments, we have a motion and a second. Should we do roll call vote, Scott?
Sure, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk Newell.
Yes.
Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So we're moving on to action sixteen. B, learning and development, adopt middle school science curriculum. Executive Director, Learning and Innovation.
Good evening. I am very happy to be introducing Dr. Kimmy Schmidt and Jonathan Mulcock. They are representing the middle school science team. And they have been working for two long years on reviewing new curriculum for our middle school science program. And they have dealt with the starts and stops that have resulted from the pandemic in piloting new curriculum, bringing it forward to the curriculum policy team. And in addition to that, there, there were a number of us that are new leaders in the learning and development team. So there were some bumps along the way, but the team has done a wonderful job looking at a range of curriculum, putting it through a very rigorous process where they themselves utilize the next generation state standard rubrics to evaluate the curriculum, as well as then met with the curriculum policy team a number of times to talk about their process, talk about the curriculum that we are putting forward here from FOS. And now we will share with you our findings and hope that you will support us in adopting this new curriculum so that it can be implemented at both of the middle schools this coming school year. Scott, are you able to pull up the PowerPoint? And then Kimmy and Jonathan, feel free to unmute and lead, lead the way.
Hello, good evening. Ooh, I can't hear myself. Let me turn on my voice. So in terms of why I am, if you don't know who I am, I am actually a Calaveras Hills High School science teacher. But in my travels to the district, I spent fourteen wonderful years at Rancho in the science department. I left Rancho right as the NGSS was being adopted by the state and served as a TOSA. And so when I took on the TOSA role, I started to lead this amazing group of passionate middle school teachers. And so this is, Priti said, it's two years. This has been more like eight years' worth of work. It's been, it's been long, and they have done a phenomenal job of weathering the storm of not having the curriculum to back what they need to do in the classroom. So I am so happy that we are at this moment. Jonathan, do you want to add anything?
No, I don't really have much to add. My name is Jonathan Mulcock, and I am a seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Russell Middle School. And I've been piloting the FOS curriculum for the last two years.
The reason why we, oh, next slide. The reason why we want FOS is because it truly meets the needs of our learners, of our middle school learners. It addresses the NGSS science standards, beginning with this idea of phenomena. It encourages kids to be curious. It encourages kids to ask questions. It encourages students to not just absorb, but really truly question their world and their environment. And that's why this is a great phenomena, sorry, great curriculum. It also possesses some very logical sequencing. And that sequencing is very clear on the maps that they provide. We'll show that in the next couple of slides. It definitely meets the needs of our diverse learners and their various learning styles. It's balanced integration with online supports, text, and hands-on tools. So if we have to ever go remote again, there are tools that'll support that, but also it'll support our in-class instruction as well. And as Priti said, we use the NGSS time rubrics, which I highly recommend using for curriculum adoption for any content area. They're applicable across the board, but specifically, they were designed for with, with the NGSS in mind. But they look at things like the teacher support. It looks at the, how it meets the needs of the ELL learner. It looks at how it meets the needs of the curriculum, would meet the needs of RSP students. So it really asks you to vet that content very carefully. Next slide, please. This is the map of the sixth to eighth grade sequence. We're not asking for the adoption in grade six, but this is truly a middle grades curriculum where it looks at six, seven, and eight. We would just be asking for seventh and eighth because that's how our schools are set up. And the sequences are listed there. There are five individual, they're kind of mini books for eighth grade and then three books for seventh grade. Those are listed right there. Next slide, please. For our learners, it will provide them with access to scientific literacy. In that encompasses familiarity with the natural world, diversity, and then its woven interdependence. One of the things that the NGSS asks for is it asks to truly integrate and weave in the different content areas as well as weaving in cross-cutting concepts, disciplinary core ideas, and then any environmental practices that need to be addressed as well. So it weeds everything in to one space, which makes it great for our teachers because it's one-stop shop. Our teachers already wear a number of hats. This will help them at least address their NGSS. This is quality curriculum. It's complete, it's cohesive, it's flexible for the teachers, and it is interactive for the kids, allowing them access to opportunities for student discourse, opportunities to reflect and expand on their thinking, to grow their thinking. And also allows them to, we're also supporting our common core teachers with learning to write and reflective thinking, and also there are nested within it formative assessment practices. The lab skills are embedded within. It is organized. It's very structured with science notebooks. Jonathan always brought in his notebook collection. Every time he would try and sell, his curriculum was fantastic. He, these kids would have this resource, this encyclopedia source that they generated themselves. And that was very much driven by their self-discovery and their curiosity. And there are, I guess, there's also the assessments embedded with it. Next slide, please.
So Kimmy and Jonathan, a quick question for you. So if I asked you for a video of students that have experienced this curriculum, because you keep, because you guys keep talking about the kids and this and that and the other. And I'm like, here I have adults telling me about the kids experiencing with the curriculum, right? Versus seeing the kids using the curriculum in action or even hearing their stories or engagement about it so that we could actually see it in action? Not that we don't trust your word, that, that's not what I'm saying at all. But you'll notice at the board meetings, we have students present. As a matter of fact, we have one of our neurodiverse students present this morning or this afternoon, excuse me, this evening about a program that he's involved in. We have the NJRO TC do the color guard. We had the, we have student board representatives from various ages participate. Why? Because we hear from the adults. But now we're talking about curriculum adoption, and you guys said that you guys have piloted. It would be very helpful that in the future, these types of situations, or even possibly at a future board meeting, we get a chance to see the students that are actually using this curriculum and with their comments. That would be very helpful for me.
Thank you. We will gladly follow up.
Thank you. And the other comment that I have, you go back a slide. One more slide. One more. Meets the needs of diverse learners. Can someone give me a definition of diverse learners in this context?
Actually, can I go back to the slide I was on?
Okay.
So when we ask our learners to show what they know, share what they learn, we're asking them for what's going on inside their head. You know, obviously, we can't open them up and see. So the only way I can find out that content is if I provide them with those different ways of showing. ways of showing, showing their learning. And so this slide, go ahead and press click, go ahead and click next. So our learners, for our diverse learners, are provided with these lessons that give them interaction with labs for kinesthetic learns, for our kids that have to move and see and do. There's that nested within it. For anyone who's an auditory learner, you know, we've got reading and writing from that textbook and the science notebooks because we still have to support our ELA and our math colleagues as well in terms of them growing as learners as well. For our kids that like to talk, we've got discussions and we know we have middle schools, they love to talk, they've got lots to say. So there's opportunity for dialogue and debate and any of those kids who operate well in that space. There's demonstrations, there's hands-on, there's also a library of videos for all those visual learners. So when you ask for our diverse learners, this is who we have in our classroom. We have kids that want to move and wiggle. We've got kids who struggle with reading. There are supports nested within the curriculum. We've got kids that like to talk and be chatty. We've got kids that want to play. So the FOS kits provide us with that. Jonathan, did you want to add anything?
I would say definitely support ELL learners and RS learners. And there's, distracted by my own voice. There's a whole section within the curriculum that talks about how it supports each type of diverse learner. And I could provide that for you if you would like to see it. It's like 40 pages long. But as far as meeting the general need of students in science, like Kimmy was saying, the curriculum provides many, many opportunities on a daily basis for investigation. It's all designed around investigation and phenomenon. And I think that's something that every student appreciates. I'm interested to know, I'm interested to know what you would be wanting to hear from students and be expecting to hear from students as far as making a decision on what curriculum would be best.
Repeat your question?
I'm interested in knowing what you would be interested in hearing from students to determine which curriculum would be the best choice.
So if I'm not mistaken, this is a presentation to the board about a curriculum that's going, that you guys would like us to adopt.
Yes.
And the presentation that I've heard thus far was about this curriculum does this and it does that and it provides a variety of needs to our students. So I, I trust the experts in terms of saying that this is the right curriculum. My ask was that if, was that, is it possible for us to hear that from the students in their experience?
Right, so like a testimony from them that they're doing investigative work?
I don't know that it's a testimony as much as just actually seeing it at work. So it would give the board an opportunity to see how the program plays out in actuality, like a demonstration.
So like a video or would somebody from the board like to come out and share it?
Thank you for the invitation. I will definitely, I will definitely take you up on that one. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Because as we look at, you know, the term, again, I hear the term diverse learners and it can mean a wide variety of things.
Yes.
So when I hear mentioned here, not knowing what the makeup of the classroom, is it an inclusive classroom? Are there a number of English language learners in the classroom? Middle school is, middle school is complex in terms of where learners are and what their requirements are in terms of their electives. So all those things tie into what the, what the opportunities are for these students when we use language like, you know, this, this is for diverse learners.
One more thing that I would add to the, to the presentation that Kimmy and Jonathan are putting forth here is that when we look at these practices on this slide, this also represents like culturally responsive practices, right? So we are thinking about students who are coming from cultures, we're talking is the main way of processing information. And this curriculum is built for that. It also, right, it isn't alienating the students who like to first learn independently and then process or then do group work because there is still the reading and the writing, the textbook elements of the curriculum is also there. And the other, the other piece that I would really highlight about phenomena and why that's such a wonderful place to start in science is it's about exploring what's happening in the world and asking students like, what do you notice? What do you see? And it's really treating the learner as coming to us with a lot of knowledge, right? They're not empty vessels to be filled, but ones that are bringing with, bringing with them their experiences and their observances of the world. And, and that's how this starts off different units and different lessons is by asking them, what do you notice? What do you already know? What, you know, what assumptions or hypotheses are you making? And then how can we investigate those and find out if they are true?
Thank you, Priti. Next slide. So as part of the way that students can show what they know, they're able to draw and annotate, label their work. They are provide, they're able to provide a claim, provide that evidence, and then tie their reasoning together. So they're really, the curriculum is good at tapping into that higher order thinking. And, you know, students can also show what they know by doing in the act of interacting with different content and different materials, they're able to really understand and, and show you that they understand. They can talk you through what they're doing. And so that's one of the things that this curriculum also does well. Next slide. Oh, go ahead and click next. Sorry, I'm talking about the picture. There we go. So students are able to really get invested in their sports.
These are our students that I see on our screen?
Next slide, please. All right, so our teachers, one of the things that CPC asks for, how is this going to be able to be picked up by either a long-term sub or a teacher, a new teacher? How, how are those supports nested within? So what our teachers will be provided with is a hard copy of materials to jump right in without waiting for, for online access. There is also an online access component, but what we've noticed is some teachers very much prefer, I want the stuff in my hands so that I can provide it for the kids to play with. So they will be provided with a set of materials. Anything that needs to be restocked has to restock within, with the school budget moving forward. Their, I guess I, oh, yeah. And that was the other thing was online instruction scares some of our instructors because power goes out, they don't have access to print stuff. So there is that hard copy available in the event a phone book goes down or, you know, some, something catastrophic happens like that. And FOS is available whenever we email them, they respond back. They actually reached out to me and Jonathan earlier this week and asked if we had any questions. So they have been very supportive with us through this process. It is very growth mindset for not only for the kids, but also for our teachers because our students will model what they see on the teacher's side of things. And so the FOS spends a lot of time in this reflective space where teachers can come in, modify their instruction based on the feedback loop that they're receiving from the students, that they can deliver that content that is, is going to reach their kids, their kids. Next slide.
Kimmy?
Yeah.
As you go through it, I know you've talked about it being culturally responsive. Could you elaborate, since that is one of our three commitments that we made back in January 2020 to ensure that our students see themselves in what they read, write, and learn?
Absolutely.
Can you elaborate on how this is culturally responsive curriculum?
So I'm, I'm going to address the culturally responsive component of this. When the teachers opened up their books, our teaching staff is incredibly diverse. And so one of the things that they were saying during discussion regarding the content was, oh, my gosh, look at this. I see me in this picture. I see me in this page and I'm, I'm not, I don't have a copy of any of the material. But when, if the teachers are seeing that, then the kids are going to see that, like I see different scientists represented. I see different students represented, different pairings of students represented in those textbooks. And that's, you know, you asked about that picture on the website in the presentation and that's very representative of what is the images that the kids will see in that, in their, in their textbook. I know that there, the scientists that are represented are diverse because I know that was one of the questions that I asked them, I asked, asked the teachers when they were looking through it because that's one of the things the time rubrics asks for. So that was definitely on our radars when we were looking at it. So this leads us to believing that because this is a dynamic curriculum, it is fun for the kids to play with and interact with and engage in phenomena with. This is why we are asking the school board to approve of our adoption of FOS. We looked at, we looked at several others. We looked at discovery education, which is very video-heavy, but not lab-heavy and not dialogue-heavy. And so we felt like that was lacking. We looked at Green Ninja, very environmentally sound curriculum, all online, but limited in terms of how our teachers felt that our kids would interact with it. And definitely there was, from what I recall, I think everything was animated, not necessarily like I see really me, I see human in those pictures. So there were some, we looked, we looked at those two specifically. I'm trying to think if, I'm, I start to confuse what my elementary group looks at. But I know that in terms of what met the needs of the teachers, because what they feel like they need to provide access for their students, this curriculum provided those opportunities in the strongest of actions. So moving forward, where we're at is K through six has the opportunity to explore FOS, possibly adopt FOS, because it'll be a continuous shot from kindergarten through sixth grade, if that's what they would like to explore. And actually, that's one of the conversations that we had, I had had with that group. They said, if middle school's going to push with this, let's take a good dive into it and see what it offers our space as well. Currently, K through fifth is using mystery science and then sixth is using math because mystery doesn't provide us with a sixth grade option at this moment. And then as well as their own MUSD-developed lessons. As far as when we get to high school, those go into their various disciplines. And so it's a little harder to gauge on what's going to go up there. But in terms of alignment in the lower grades, we have the potential to align in a, in a very concrete way if, if the elementary decides that this would be a good option for that. So the ask is you approve this curriculum and, you know, we will get together our, our classroom evidence piece and provide that, happy to make that report for you of all the good stuff that goes on in our classrooms because there's great stuff that happens, great learning, great teaching, great exploring for our kids.
And what kind of projects will, will these students be working on? I mean, is it going to bring excitement, engagement, hands-on? I have a seventh grader right now at Russell and, you know, she comes home, I mean, she struggles in school, but you know, she's, she loves science and she's in Miss Tanes class. You know, she comes home and she's excited. You know, that's the only topic I see her that, you know, that excites her. Like she's, she's mentioning today, she did the chemical formula of periodic table molecules. So they made molecules by model and, and she loves this sort of stuff. She even like, you know, going through her emails, she emails her teacher videos because she's excited about, you know, this topic. So I'm just curious, what sort of projects will they be working on? Do you have, you know, pictures for us to see or to display these projects and what the students be studying?
I can say a little bit of the projects. I personally have not taken any pictures. I actually rarely take pictures. I've been at Russell for 25 years and I just don't take a whole lot of pictures of what my students are doing because we're just so busy doing stuff in the classroom. I'm keeping both seventh and eighth grade science now. Eighth graders are exploring magnetism. We're doing, we're working in the course of electromagnetic force. And so they initially started just exploring with magnets and just taking a closer look at magnets and how they interact with one another. From there, they've used magnets to determine that there's a north and a south pole of the magnets and how they can just use a simple magnet hanging from a table to determine where the north pole is. Today, we were looking to see how distance affects magnetism and students were working once again with magnets with the apparatus that was fed up to space out magnets and then measure using a spring scale to determine how, when magnets are separated, magnetic force is affected. That's, that's for eighth grade. What they've been doing, seventh grade, what we're working on right now is basis of matter. And so a phenomenon that they saw today in class was a glass of ice with a vial of water in it. And we saw the students coming up, measuring the temperature inside and outside of the vial, so the ice, but also in the water that was sitting in the ice. Students at that point knew that freezing point was zero, but we saw that the water in the vial wasn't freezing. And so it was a discrepant event and students are trying to figure out, I thought, you know, zero means freezing, why isn't it going to frozen? I don't want to bore you with any more details unless you want more.
Yeah, I'll just add right to like generalize what Jonathan is sharing, right? The, the overall approach is about students learning science by doing science, science, right? So they are acting as scientists. And he just described a couple of specific ways that they're doing that. And, and so they are leading investigations, conducting their own analysis, using lab equipment. So it's not just reading about what other people have done in science, but actually doing it themselves. And then those active investigations are supported with science notebooks. So they're also learning the process of how do you write, write lab reports? How do you collect data? How do you form conclusions? So, so new, the science, if you're doing science class well, you are also embedding writing structures and analysis into it.
Okay, thank you. And I accept the invitation to accompany Vice President Norwood on this field trip to Russell's science class.
Am I going to get some forewarning?
I think you already did.
Yep. And I'll ask Executive Director Priti to accompany them to your classroom.
Supervise us.
Yeah, you can, you can assign us stations in the classroom and we can, it can be extra co-teachers.
Sounds good.
Thank you. And do we have any public comments at this time?
Is this the last slide on the present?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we do have a hand raised. Robert Jung, we are going to enable your audio. You will have two minutes to speak. You'll take yourself off mute. One second. There you go. And you're good to go for two minutes.
Norwood.
Hello, Bart, um, this is Robert Jung again. So I wanna commend the team for exploring the curriculum, you know, from adults' point of view, I, I think the curriculum is awesome, it gives the kids the chance to really experiment really hands-on. However, I, I think Chris, as well as Kelly pointed out a very important lesson that I learned when I was working for Cisco, and my CEO told me that the customer is king. And in this particular case, our customers are, are students. And we should be able to see that if our students are using this curriculum, they should be engaged and excited and all of those things that make learning that much more powerful. So I would encourage the, the board to actually go see the kids in action for this particular curriculum. So, so I would wanna do that. The, the question that I have for either person, Kimmy or our other science teacher, is that as we go into investigation, especially lab work, there's a certain amount of discipline that's required, and we don't wanna necessarily enforce the discipline so much that their natural create, uh, wonder goes away. So there's this balance between, you know, really following lab procedures and, and how to do things sort of by the book versus this natural curiosity. So I'd like to understand how that curriculum addresses that, and then how does, as we get more and more into using tools for computer science, how do these labs work with programmable items that's gonna be more involved in, in our science in the future? Sorry, thanks.
Thank you, Robert Jung. Do we have any more public comments?
Uh, we have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Is there any motions?
Thank you, Robert, for that feedback. I respect your opinion on the recommendation that we see the curriculum. However, I've known Jonathan for a very long time at Russell, and the fact that they weren't aware to provide this in the presentation doesn't mean that the actual good work isn't going on. So I'm gonna make the motion to approve the NGSS curriculum, with the understanding that we do get our appointment. And then that, just for these types of things in the future, that we know the student story tells the story better than any adult ever could. In any way, not only for us at the board, but for the community as well, I mean, curriculum gets adopted, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Could we have a motion and a second? Are there any further discussions or comments?
Yeah, I just had a question. As far as adopting this new curriculum, is there a timeline as far as it being reviewed again or looked at again?
You mean after it's being implemented, or?
Correct. The, is there an expiration date to this particular approval of, of using FOS?
There's not a specific expiration date, as the standards change and as our budget allows, we like to update our curriculum. So next up is actually gonna be high school history curriculum, but there's not an end date to this curriculum.
Can I, can I add real quickly that the curriculum that has been in use, I think came in like 2001?
And is not currently aligned to?
No, it is not an NGSS line, it was CST-aligned.
It was formally approved in 2013.
Oh, okay.
But we've been working with California State Science Standards Curriculum since then, I mean, we've been having to make it work.
So that answers my next question, as far as, is it replacing an existing curriculum? So they, they, the, the two teachers have answered that. And then, secondly, was there a monetary cost to the previous curriculum, and how much was that?
I'm too new to know that. The curriculum costs for this curriculum would be eighty thousand.
Thank you, understood. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I think similar to Min's question is, mine is, I guess, how often, on average, how often are adoption of new curriculum are being done?
Every year, we're looking at, at a couple of different subjects, and we try to make sure that we are, you know, being responsive at the elementary and secondary level, and, and there's a rotation of the subjects that we have in place. Sometimes that rotation gets thrown off by other changes in the state requirements, like, so if standards really change, graduation requirements change. The pandemic threw a couple of things off track, so there's a rotation with slight modifications.
I guess for, for each topic, for instance, this is for the, you know, middle school science. I think you said, I mean, the last one was, what, 2001? Or 13?
The standards were adopted in 2013 or 14, the new NGSS were. But our curriculum is from prior to that. It might not be 2001, it could be like 2005, but needless to say, it's outdated. And not aligned. And, and, you know, I'd like to say one thing about our teachers is that they're incredibly resilient people. They found a way to make it work. And, you know, here we are, how many years later, asking for curriculum, because now we're realizing it's, it's time, it's time to, you know, we've got an innovation campus going in, let's innovate. It's time to be there, and we, part of why we went slow was because I told them not to rush. I encouraged them to take their time to find something they love, and the running joke was, because this is gonna take us, most of us through retirement. Because we know we're not gonna get a curriculum anytime soon, once we ask for this. So our ask is, is huge, because we are, we understand what's at stake, we understand resources are limited, and we are trying to be very cognizant of that impact on, on the district as a whole.
And I'll add to that, that the next generation's science standards were, while they weren't controversial, they were something that created a lot of how, how do we do this? How, what are we gonna do with our old science curriculum, how does it integrate? And so you also have to wait for publishers to get their curriculum in place. And for some of the text adoptions, they're coincide with adoption at the state level. Like, you might recall when we adopted the social studies textbooks for seventh and eighth grade, and there was a controversy around, controversy is the wrong word, but there was a very real concern about the non-culturally responsive aspects of some of the books around Hindu representation. And so, on average, I would say that a full textbook adoption, K eight, is about a six to 10-year cycle. And there was also that point in time around five or six years ago, when we thought we might be able to do all online texts, and that they might be at a much less less cost than traditional textbooks, but publishers still need to make their money. So they're still charging what they used to charge with a textbook, but now, if you go online and look at the FOS, you'll see how the publishers have now used the digital platform, not simply as reproducing text onto digital, but also making it integrated and with.
Interactive.
Interactive, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kim and Jonathan, for investing the time in searching for the right book for the students. We, we are not, we, we are not teachers, we are, we are board members, and so we trust your work, and we would wait to visit the classroom, to see the students in action. And I wanna thank you for doing everything for our students.
Yeah, thank you, I, I didn't realize it was, you know, that old, and, you know, making me appreciate the teachers even more for being so creative, you know, using the old materials, trying to teach and educate our students in this, you know, in this day and age, and with the, you know, COVID happening, I mean, they're still being engaged, and, you know, I, I respect that, and I, you know, I thank all the teachers out there who, who's, you know, trying to teach our, our kids. So with that, you know, I'm ready to move forward with my vote. If there's no further comments, we have a.
I have a comment.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I, I do wanna thank, thank folks for your presentation and your work, I think it's just so important that we really make the science and your next generation. I've had conversations about this with colleagues even before joining the school board, and even though they like to say it's next-generation science standards, when I actually look at what's cutting-edge science, it's just so much more ahead of what too often I was seeing being taught in the classrooms. And it's real important in the 21st century, we're almost a quarter of the way into it, with more and more new jobs being developed, the jobs becoming obsolete, we really need to update our students' skills, our teaching. So we'll really try to move to the cutting-edge of science education. Thank you.
We had a, a motion and a second? Let's do roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, Board Member Si.
Aye.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Yeo?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan?
Yes.
Passes five-oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you, and your feedback on the absence of student voices is noted, we'll do better next time. I'm excited to take you to classrooms where you can see it in action, and we will be happy to also come back in the fall with showing you, bringing our students back as well to, to show the impact of the new curriculum once we implement it across the board. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item sixteen C, Superintendent's Office.
All right. We have up next our resolution for Women's History Month.
Uh, yes, we have student members at Milpitas High School, the Girls Empowerment Leaders Club, and they revised the resolution and produced a video reading.
Recognizing and honoring March as National Women's History Month, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas in Milpitas, inspiring women have made a difference and paved the way for other women in their respective fields, such as Karina Dominguez, the youngest Latina council member who was a former vice mayor for the city of Milpitas, City Council Vice Mayor Carmen Montano, and City Council Member Emvelin Tua, School Board President Kelly Yip Chuan, and School Board Member Han Lan, both active leaders in the community. MUSD Assistant Superintendent Wendy Jeng, Executive Directors Pretty Johari and Mary Jude Doran Pinghas, and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, who earned her way up the MUSD ranks over the last three decades, from classroom teacher to superintendent of schools.
Whereas in Santa Clara County, influential women have risen to prominence, such as Super Advisor Cindy Chavez, former San Jose Mayor Susan Hammer, who served as the city's mayor from 1991 to 1999, and County Superintendent of Schools Dr. Mary Ann Duan, and many more. Whereas throughout the United States, strong women have garnered a special place in our history, such as Kamala Harris, the first woman and woman of color to serve as vice president, Michelle Obama, the first African-American first lady, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, the youngest woman to serve in Congress, Harriet Tubman, best known for ushering slaves to freedom through the Underground Railroad, Amelia Earhart, the first female aviator to fly solo across the Atlantic, Rosa Parks, who helped launch the Civil Rights Movement, Sandra Day O'Connor, the first female Supreme Court Justice who saved 24 years, tennis great Billie Jean King, who beat Bobby Riggs in the Battle of the Sexes, Sally Ride, the first American woman in space, U.S. Representative Nancy Pelosi, the first female Speaker of the House, and the list goes on.
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, such as the Women's Suffrage Movement, #MeToo Movement, March for Our Lives, and the Women's March. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, climate change, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all.
Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military, such as Force Star General Anne E. Dunwoodie, and Commodore Grace Hopper, who had a destroyer named after her, the USS Hopper DDG-70, as was the Cray XC6 Hopper Supercomputer. Whereas the rights of women have been challenged throughout history, culminating in legislation such as, in 1920, the 19th Amendment to the Constitution is ratified, ensuring the right of women to vote. In 1963, President John F. Kennedy signed into law the Equal Pay Act, prohibiting sex-based wage discrimination between men and women performing the same job in the same workplace. In 1964, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act into law. Title VII bans employment discrimination based on race, religion, national origin, or sex. In 1994, President Bill Clinton signed the Violence Against Women Act, providing funding for programs that help victims of domestic violence, rape, sexual assault, stalking, and other gender-related violence. And in 2013, the U.S. military removes a ban against women serving in combat positions.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Milpitas Unified School District that March is designated as Women's History Month, passed and adopted by the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education at a meeting held on March 8, 2022, by the following vote.
Thank you, are there any public comments?
Uh, we have no public comment this time.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I second.
There's a motion and there's a second, is there any further discussion? If not, let's go for a roll call vote.
Okay, Board Member Si.
Aye.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk Yeo?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yip Chuan?
Yes.
Passes five-oh.
Thank you. Item C two. Adopt Resolution 2022 dot three-one, resolution calling for a June 7, 2022 election to extend a quality education partial tax, Superintendent's Office.
At our last board meeting, the board reviewed the polling results from EMC on the renewal of the parcel tax, which is eighty-four dollars a year, and expires on June 30, 2023. And the board made the motion to move forward at a simple renewal, and so for tonight, we asked the board to place the resolution for a parcel tax on the June 7 ballot.
Thank you, are there public, are there any public comments?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any further discussions or comments from board members? Seeing none, let's move forward to a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote, Board Member Si.
I'll hold my vote.
That's abstain? Okay, Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board man, Board Clerk Yeo?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood? Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes four oh with one abstention.
Thank you. We're moving on to C three. Dis, go ahead Superintendent.
Thank you. So we will take the resolution and we will get to the registrar of voters. Our, um, the board's action to have on the June seventh election, the extension of our educational parcel tax, which provides one point six million towards science, technology, engineering, arts, athletics, and math programs, and is essential for our continuance of those programs. And then following that on, by March fifteenth, we will have our argument for the parcel tax delivered to the registrar of voters. So thank you very much. The next item is, as I said last month, at the first board meeting of every month, we will have a routine item to review board member absences so that if there are any, the board can make a determination under Board Bylaw ninety-two fifty. So presented is board member Si during the closed session of the February eighteenth board meeting with twenty minutes remaining in the session.
Okay, I'm gonna give board member Ty a few minutes to talk.
Okay, well, part of me kind of has a feeling how this is gonna go already, but I think I want the public to hear. So I, I already had communicated in advance that I would not be able to make the session because it was scheduled right in the middle of a Friday. I generally work Monday through Friday through normal work hours, as do most people in the community. And this was already on top of a special board meeting called where that Friday afternoon, which I had already carved a lot of time out of my schedule to make, because it was being held on a Friday afternoon during work hours rather than Tuesday evening as usual. That said, I did make my very best effort to attend as much as possible. But it's kind of hard because I had already arranged other stuff during that day to accommodate the first one taken out of the day. So, um, and I had already requested that we pick a different time. So if anything, I think this counts as a reasonable hardship.
Are there any public comments?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
I believe the motion is to move to approve the resolution. Is that correct?
The board, if the board desires, after listening to trustee Si, trustee Si explained why his absence would be considered a hardship. The board needs to determine if that is acceptable. And if so, then the motion would be to approve the resolution for board member Si's absence of the special board meeting that was held on February eighteenth, with the exception of the last twenty minutes.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. I know that we do this every month, but it needs to be explained as far as how this motion goes. So move to approve the resolution on behalf of board member Si.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so let's open up for discussion. Was it communicated that board member Si was not going to attend the meeting?
Yes, board member Si said that, that time would be difficult for him to appear.
I, I didn't even know he was working, so. I, I didn't know that he wasn't going to be there, I think until, was it at the meeting? Yeah, because he, he didn't communicate to me that he wasn't going to be there. I assume he was gonna, you know, make the time commitment to attend the meetings, and that wasn't communicated to me as the board president. I would like to know if somebody wasn't going to be there and what was the excuse. Board members, do you have any comments or questions to board member Ty?
No.
Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, we should continue with the roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Yes.
Board member Leanne.
Abstain.
Board member, or board clerk, you know.
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
And board president Yip Chuan.
No, I wasn't notified. Thank you. So board member Si, in the future, if you're not gonna be at meetings, I would appreciate if you notify me and let me know what's going on because I assume that everyone is gonna be there.
Oh, I, I did send out an email. I can try and find that email for you.
Motion, I'm just gonna say motion did pass, three ayes, one no, one abstention.
That's it for the.
Do you have one more? Four.
Yeah, the next one under C is.
Thank you. Scott, can you go ahead and show that one?
Sure, it's select candidates on the CSBA Delegate Assembly Ballot. And they are due with postage by Tuesday, March fifteenth to be valid. Let me bring up the attachment.
Scott, can you pull up the document for the screen?
That's what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there you go.
So there are four seats and there are four candidates.
There are four seats and four candidates. That's scary.
And three of them are incumbents as well. And one new candidate that has been proactive in the School Boards Association as well. So unless you want to take public comment.
Yeah, I mean, if, do we have public comments?
Uh, we have no public comment at this time.
Then I will move to approve all four as the selection for the CSBA delegate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept all four for the four positions. Let's do a roll call vote.
There's only four, it's only four for four, right?
Correct.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk, you know.
Yes.
Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Just waiting. Do you want me to just jump in?
Jump in.
Okay. Sixteen D Human Relations, this evening trustees. We updated the Community Specialist Job Description for our Spanish-speaking liaison. You saw her honored earlier this evening, Norma Morales. And this is just to reflect the current duties that she's been working on the last several years, but we needed to update her job description. So I would like to recommend that you approve this job description for the liaison Spanish-speaking Community Specialist two position.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
Are there public comments?
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's do roll call.
Okay, board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk, you know.
C.
Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
And board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to item seventeen. Consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or corrections. Do we have comments?
I'd like to request item seventeen B five. Seventeen B five. And seventeen B seven. Be removed from consent items until we have a report back from both of these agencies in regards to how are they going to support our students with the work that they're doing in the district with the construction.
Okay, are there any more items that you'd like to table or be pulled or removed for corrections or discussions?
No.
None? Okay. Um, is there, then, is there a motion for?
Yeah, a motion to approve the consent items except for seventeen B five and B seven.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's do roll call, Scott.
Okay, roll call vote. Board member Si.
Aye.
Board member Leanne.
Yes.
Board clerk, you know.
Yes.
Board vice president Norwood.
Yes.
Board president Yip Chuan.
Yes.
Approved, five oh.
President Yip Chuan, I shared with Assistant Sup, Zhang, and QKA is here tonight because they actually have been doing work with our students, so.
Yes. Yeah, we can go through each item. And we have representative from each company actually here tonight, joining us virtually. And we can start with the first item, number five. That is Kichel's, to approve Kichel's agreement for the construction management services for our summer project. This summer, it will be a very busy summer for our facility team. Travis Kirk will be overseeing the innovation campus as well as the high school campus modernization. We have a solar project going on, so these are the two largest projects going on. And in the meantime, we also plan to have some roofing, paving, fencing, and HVAC projects done at various school site. That's why we engaged with Kichel, since Kichel has been our CM, construction manager for the past few summer project, and they did a great job in managing that. I have a Jim from Kichel here tonight with us, so maybe Jim can answer the questions from the board. Jim?
Good evening. So I think the concern of the board is how we engage the students and get them familiar with the construction industry. So for several districts, we typically would, with the assistance of the school, we would notify the students that we would hire some interns. The only caveat is they need to be at least eighteen, and it would be a paid position. And what we would like to do is they would shadow our project managers, our project engineers. I will tell you that the starting salary for a project engineer in the construction management field is now about eighty to ninety thousand dollars to start for somebody right out of college. Most people are not aware of that. A lot of people are interested in construction or the management, but they don't want to, you know, actually be into the trades where they're carpenters or whatever, but they want to be involved. So we like to give them that opportunity to see what's involved in those type of projects, and specifically education. Any question?
So Jim, could you maybe talk a little bit the plan or what Kichel can offer to help our students, either in this summer or maybe for the, I mean, for the project?
We could do it. We could, we could set something up at school. Typically, we would talk to several of the teachers that, you know, that teach more technical, science-based, mathematical, that type of thing. But we're welcome, we welcome any student that's interested in seeing what the construction field is like. We'd sit down with the students, talk to them, do a brief interview, and if they're interested, bring them on board. And we would obviously tailor the schedule of work to them. I mean, some, a couple hours, you know, a week, others are more of a, almost full-time through the summer, but we can modify it to whatever works for the students.
Uh, Jim?
Yes?
What we need you to do is go ahead and draft a plan and talk with Wendy and Travis about how you'll implement the plan. Because from the beginning of our bond project, we, and the board especially, have many times talked about the importance of involving our learners in the work somehow. If that's anywhere from people of Kichel coming to classrooms to talk with, having them shadow, do informational interviews. There's a myriad of ways that students younger than eighteen could be introduced to the trades through Kichel. And so we're gonna need to have something a little more concrete from you.
Okay, all right. I just heard about this, uh, this afternoon, so I could get on that.
Thank you.
Will, will we see this plan in two weeks?
Certainly.
Thank you.
And Jim, since, um, let me ask you this, and because I know we're also planning for the, for those projects, and there are some big documents, I mean, if we bring your agreement to the next board meeting and along with the proposed plan, would this change our planning for the summer projects?
Um, no. Wendy, we've worked with the district for over ten years, so now that won't impact projects.
Okay, perfect. That's good. Okay, thank you, Jim.
Welcome.
So we'll come back, uh, at the next board meeting. Yeah, and we'll present a potential, possible future internship program and along with this proposal for board approval.
Excellent.
And now tonight, with us, we also have Erin from QKA. QKA is our architect for the Innovation Campus Project. So I'll turn it over to him to share with his firm's plan in regards to internship and how the firm can help our students.
Thanks, Wendy. So we've been doing a couple of things related to this topic. I remember you all talking about this. I remember you all talking about this a few times at previous board meetings, and one of those times also, Brian from HMH came to talk about the ACE mentorship program that Milpitas High School students participate in. That's Architecture, Construction, and Engineering. And so, myself and Giuliano from our office, and as well as our landscape architect, and then we're actually working with Brian, Brian's company for civil engineering for the project, are all participating as mentors in that program. We've been doing that since January and well through the end of the school year, and that's a structured program. It's actually a national organization that provides this, this program where we introduce the students to all the different architecture, construction, engineering disciplines and work with them on a project throughout that process. So, we actually had one of our mentoring sessions today. So, it's every Tuesday for two hours, and there are five students from Milpitas High School in that program. So, that's been great. And then, also reached out to Paul Akoye, who is part of that program as well, and Annette Rodarte at Milpitas High School, and I have a meeting with them on Friday to talk about other ways we can support Milpitas High School students. Paul mentioned providing feedback to some of the projects ahead of their final presentations, things like that, and simulating what James was talking about, and to talk to them about potential internship and job shadow programs for the summer as well.
Thank you, Erin.
So, Erin, you had mentioned that there is the ACE mentorship program at Milpitas High School?
Yes.
And you've been working with how many students?
There are five students from Milpitas High School in that program. There are about twenty students total, and they're from across the sort of greater Silicon Valley area.
And how long have you been working with those five students?
So, that program has been going on, we started basically in January, just after the new year, this year.
How long have you been working with the district?
Um, let's see, it's been about a year now, I think, maybe a little less. I'd have to look exactly, but around there.
So, this is the first time that you've worked with Milpitas Unified School District?
Yes.
Okay.
We did, I'm sorry, we did do one small painting project about a year before that, Chris.
Okay. Although, well, thank you for that response, and thank you for your willingness to reach out to Mr. Akoye and extend, extend additional services or additional opportunities to our youth. I appreciate you getting started with the mentorship program. Obviously, with, we know the construction trade is gonna be around for many, many years to come, and from the beginning of all of this work, I have been extremely strong advocate for our students being involved somewhere in all of the dollars that the taxpayers have spent. So, while I do appreciate what you have offered, I am looking for more, and I am willing to approve item seventeen B seven based on the fact that you've moved forward with this work thus far. But the bar has to be much, much higher in terms of the number of students that we can serve and what we can do on their behalf. And I would like to see a plan. Well, I would leave that to Wendy and Travis and team determining what that plan could be moving forward in terms of making sure that, again, we see our learners in the midst of all this great work that we're doing. So, I, with that, I am willing to approve, make a motion to approve item seventeen B with the contingency that there is a more comprehensive plan that reaches a much larger number of students in this space in the near future.
This is seventeen B seven?
Seventeen B seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seventeen B seven.
Right, with the understanding that there will be a plan, more comprehensive plan delivered, that we can reach a larger number of our students in the immediate future through this organization. That's the motion and the second.
Let's do a roll call.
Roll call vote. Board Member Si?
Aye.
Board Member Leanne?
Yes.
Board Clerk, you know?
Yes.
Board Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Board President Yipchuan?
Yes.
Passes five oh.
Thank you.
Wendy and Trill, I'll follow up with you guys after I talk to Paul and Annette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eighteen, dates of future board meetings. March twenty-second, tentative study session at five, tentative closed session at six, open session at seven, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and boardroom. April twenty-sixth, tentative study session at five, tentative closed session at six, open session at seven, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and boardroom. And then, May tenth, tentative study session at five, tentative closed session six, open session at seven, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and boardroom. Okay, moving on to number nineteen. Are there any announcements and reminders?
Yes, I have some. First, I would like to remind the board that it took action in the special board meeting on February eighteenth to enact the governor's thirty-day, actually it was the governor, the legislators, thirty-day emergency so that board members can meet virtually without having to post their location. And our next board meeting is March twenty-second, so it will have been thirty-two days, which exceeds the thirty-day. And so, any board member wishing to work to participate remotely will need to follow the Brown Act requirements and post their location.
No, I, one second. My understanding was that the action did extend to thirty days on top of that, so it should cover that. If, if you're telling me it doesn't cover that, then I think we should extend it for thirty days if it's not gonna be covered.
Well, it's, it's not on the agenda, right, to discuss or vote?
Right, Mr. Forstner, the way that Trustee Si interpreted the action, is that how the action was recorded?
Yeah, I'll have to look into that. It is an interesting interpretation since the initial thirty days had not yet expired, but we enacted another thirty days on the eighteenth during the special meeting cuz it would have had expired before this meeting. So, let me check into that and, and see if we shift back to solely the Brown Act or if we can keep that extension, and then I'll, I'll let the board know.
Thank you.
So, I'm, I'm gonna put it like this. The understand, my understanding was, you know, you get thirty days plus thirty days, like add it to the end. It's not like, if there's like an overlap period or it's less.
So, I'll say this, if it doesn't cover the March twenty-second board meeting, then we should do something to adopt AB three sixty-one before then so that these provisions are gonna remain in place. So, Scott, yeah, let me know, and, and I hope to hear from you soon. But, but yeah, I'll just say this, my request to adopt AB three sixty-one stands if it's not gonna be covered for March twenty-second.
So, at this point, we, we don't know until Scott looks into it. But in the meantime, expect it to follow the Brown Act until we get confirmation. Board Member Ty?
You can ask anyone else, any other governing body.
Okay, so.
I have another announcement.
Announcements, okay.
And the other announcement is our MUS, Annual MUSD Crab Feed, hosted by Kwanis, will be in person on April eighth from five to nine at the Milpitas Community Center.
Are there any more announcements, executive board members? Okay, how about board members?
On March seventeenth, Thursday, three thirty PM, with the support of the superintendent and Mary Jude, we'll be hosting, we're working with the Senate Clara County School Boards Association Legislative Action Committee to hold a special education inclusive conversation from three thirty to five PM, featuring CSBA legal and legislative government affairs from the Senate Clara County Office of Education, our local SELPA, and Senator Dave Cortez to talk about inclusive special education.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. Are there any more announcements or reminders? Okay, seeing none, I would like to motion that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board Member Ty?
Aye.
Okay.